Counsel, if you will come to order, it is two minutes after 7:00 PM. We are in regular session and we do have a quorum with all members present. In just a moment, I will ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by Councilmember Perro and then be led in pledges to the US flag, followed by the pledge to the Texas flag by Mayor Protem Lamont. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe, under God, one in indivisible.
You may be seated. We will go on to citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this time, you may complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. We have Veronica, sorry Veronica, I would butcher your name.
Ruensahl.
Pardon?
Ruensahl.
Ruensahl, would you come forward, please? What happened to the microphones on the podium?
Oh, they're down.
Or they bent down or something? Okay. Thank you, Veronica. State your name and your address, please.
Veronica Ruensahl, One Green Hill Trail, representing Keep Trophy Club Wild, KTCW, a nonprofit organization. At the January 27th Trophy Club Town Council meeting, approved a local Girl Scouts project to build their community garden at Harmony Park. It was agreed at that time that as a part of this project, the nonprofit organization, Keep Trophy Club Wild, KTCW, would serve as a conduit for fundraising efforts and would take on the role of managing the project's funds for the Girl Scouts. In addition, it was decided that KTCW would enter into a lease agreement with the town of Trophy Club and be responsible for subletting the garden spaces so that it will, so that all activities related to the community garden will fall, fall under KTCW's nonprofit umbrella. Subsequently, and there were meetings among the Girl Scout troop, Parks and Rec Department, and the KTCW.
Veronica, I'm gonna stop you a moment.
Sure.
There is an agenda item immediately following consent agenda to deal with this particular subject.
Right.
We can't have a discussion with you about this subject during citizens' presentations.
I'm not discussing, I'm just want to make my statement first. I won't be talk, I will not talk during this subject discussion.
Well, I appreciate that effort, but because I've already told other people that we'll have to wait till the agenda item comes, I'm gonna stop you and ask you to wait, please, when we can consider the item, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much, Veronica. All right. Anyone else that wishes to speak about another subject that would like to talk? All right. Holly, I don't believe we had anybody else, is that right?
No, Mayor, not for citizens.
All right. All right. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We only have one item on the consent agenda, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes of May 12th, 2015. Anyone wishing to alter those minutes and therefore pull it from consent. Hearing none, I would then enter taking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve consent agenda item number one.
Mayor Protem Lamont moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Jim Perro, seconds. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous, no opposed. In our regular session, consider and take appropriate action regarding community garden project. There is a staff report for that. Counsel, my guess is that you have been receiving emails from citizens. You may have had some discussions with some citizens. Philip Schaffner and I have met with some concerned citizens and talked to other citizens, and there have been some expressed points about the original motion and the progress being made. And so what I would like to accomplish at the first is see if you have questions of staff that you might need information about in order to work through this issue, and we'll kind of go through that to see if you have questions for that. My recommendation, and the recommendation of the town manager, is that we refer this item to the town manager, to let the town manager and staff and the Park and Rec Council liaison and the citizens meet and try to come to conclusions about topics and see if we can't get everything together. Now, for the citizens that are here, the original motion was very specific as to who would be in charge, and Veronica is from that organization and was talking about that. So over the past few months, there's been some conversations by various members of the community with Adam Adams about who would be in charge and how that might work, and that seemed to be in flux a week ago. And council had a concern that we had moved forward and made great progress trying to get the garden established and still didn't have anything definite about who was going to deal with the lease, who was going to hand out the plots, how they were going to be managed, and there was no agreement in place. So part of tonight is to deal with that specific subject. And Veronica, I suspect you have something about that to say, and that might be a question because there was some concern expressed, at least was why didn't Keep Trophy Club Wild already have an agreement with the town? Why didn't that happen? There may have been a lack of direction to the town attorney about that, and we need to clarify that point before we go forward, at least is what I'm hearing from council and the town manager, is that's probably our biggest point, is we're making decisions and we haven't gotten past that first point. So that's my advice, and so, citizens, I've talked to some of you and let you know that the suggestion that I'm gonna make and that the town manager is making is that we don't want to have citizens stand up and rebut each other and point fingers at each other and our staff and create an atmosphere that's not productive for all of us. And so we really think that's better handled offline somewhat, if at all possible. And I think we will all take a degree of fault of why this hasn't happened as smoothly as it should have, and it's time for us to regroup and see if we can't make that happen. So council, do you have any questions that you need some clarification on? And after that, I'm gonna see if Veronica wants to finish her statement about Keep Trophy Club Wild. Counsel?
I guess this is the right time, I got a couple of questions slash comments. I do want to hear what Veronica and everybody else has to say. I disagree, Mayor. There may be some fault here, but one of the reasons that this motion passed was because we clearly had a group come before us and say, "We are going to take responsibility." Okay? We with Adam are gonna take responsibility to get an agreement in place, and then we're gonna move forward with the project. And on that promise, we agreed to donate money or give money and do a lot of different things. And now I hear that we've moved forward with the project without even having an agreement in place. I am dumbfounded, is not the right word, but I don't know how we got to this point where we, as a council, gave instruction to a group that came before us and gave instruction to one of our departments and said, "This is how we want this executed." And the answer back was, "Well, we're kind of doing it right." I mean, why are we making motions? Why are we voting on things? Why are we deciding anything when Parks can just say, "Oh, we didn't have an agreement and we're kind of doing this halfway this way, halfway that way?" It's extremely frustrating to me to go and talk to citizens and to hear them genuinely frustrated, and I am genuinely frustrated about this. There's, there's a Girl Scout troop involved. We recognize the fact that those girls will grow up one day, they'll move on and they'll do other things, more girls might come in, more girls might leave, the Girl Scouts not might, might not be involved in the future. That's the reason I voted to put this other established group in charge of this project, because Girl Scouts come and go. They're, I was an Eagle Scout, but I don't attend Boy Scout meetings every week. I'm sure I was committed to projects. We had the foresight to say, "This is a group that's gonna stand before us and take responsibility for this project with Adam, and they're gonna execute this project and we're all gonna work together." And now it's coming back before council, and the agreement hasn't been signed. I specifically said I wanted a gate and a lock on this project. That hadn't been done. There's not even a fence around it. There's no lock on it. The motions are made and we say things, and does it not mean anything? I mean, I'm extremely frustrated. If, if, if the decisions that this council made that night were followed and people did what they said they would do, simple, do what you say you're going to do, then no one would be here tonight talking about this. It's really that simple. People did not do what they said they were going to do. I don't care what the excuse is, I don't care what he said, she said, the group of people that sat up here, Adam, the, all the different groups, did not do what they came up here and said they were going to do. If somebody disagrees with me, I'd like to hear that. This is a good lesson for the kids. Do what you say you're going to do, and things work. Now, how we resolve it, I don't know, but it's, it's frustrating to me that the amount of time and energy that's been expended on this by Stephen and Stephen, I mean, guys, you have really important things to be doing in this town. Mr. Mayor, I mean, come on. How many hours does everybody spend on this talking and, and writing? And this is a beautiful community garden. I love it. I've been out there four or five times watching it. I had no idea that we hadn't had an agreement put in place. Are you kidding me? The very first thing in the motion, get together, Adam, with Patricia and these guys, and put an agreement together. And after we have an agreement, we move forward. I'm in the real estate business. I would not have a tenant of mine say, "This is a restaurant space. Go ahead and move your, move your furniture in there and open up for business and start selling sandwiches and we'll work out that lease business later on and figure out what's gonna happen." I think I've covered everything that I wanted to cover. A lot of people have been hurting this, and I'm sorry about that, but it's because things were not executed the way they were supposed to be. And we need to, we need to find a solution to that, but I'll get off my soapbox.
All right, that's all right. Thank you. Any other council member?
One quick thing. Generally feel the same way Garrett does about this. I do want to clarify, I think, I think Garrett and everyone recognizes that I do believe that based on what we talked about in January, that our Girl Scout troop have at least done what they committed to do. So thank you, girls, for that. I totally agree with the mayor about, I don't want to have a bunch of back and forth and rebuttals and trying to point fingers. However, this council is going to have to determine who is going to manage this, and given that the candidates that will come before us to, for us to make that decision are already involved, I have to evaluate those folks on their merits and what's happened over the last couple of months is gonna play a major role in that. So at some point, I'm gonna have to hear the stories about why this has fallen apart because I need to understand how to make a decision. I have to make a decision to commit public resources and public funds, and I need to have all the facts. I don't want that to turn into a, you know, a fisticuffs in the council chambers between people, but at some point, I gotta get the information, and that's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jim.
As a follow-up too, from a little different perspective, I want to make sure it's clear that we were willing, when this motion came before us on January 27th, to get the thing rolling and provide some funds and, and some staffing to help get it off the ground. But, but from my perspective, and as I understand this whole project, this will be a volunteer project. It will be run by citizens who want to come out and, and work in that area and plant in that area and maintain and operate that area. And my only concern is, based on the way we're moving at this moment, is it, it looks like it could become, if we're not careful the way this is put together in an agreement, a town project where residents, once they see it starting to grow and all of a sudden people drop away, then the town is looked upon as the responsible party to keep it up and running. And, and I don't believe that was the intent that was voted on on the 27th, and I don't want it to become a town project. I want this to be a volunteer project, run and supported by residents themselves, and its success or failure will rest on those groups and those residents.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Jim?
I just want to make sure that we all understand that this project wasn't derailed or suspended because of a disgruntled neighbor. This, this project was brought up here because we found out there's a lot of inconsistencies or things weren't followed. But it got out there that, you know, there was a neighbor who kind of stopped all of this, and I just want to make sure that we don't pit people against each other. This is, we want to make sure we get it right. We are gonna move forward with this, with the right people at some point. It's gonna get done. We're just gonna make sure we, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure it gets done properly this time.
Right. So as a piece of information, I'm gonna ask our town manager, Stephen Seidel, to offer his input as to his suggestion for a way to move forward. Stephen?
Mayor and council and interested citizen parties, you know, I think that a community garden is a wonderful thing. I think it's a great idea. I think whether you're a Girl Scout or you're someone like my mom, learning how to garden and having an opportunity to learn and to have a place like that is something that's really special, and I think that's one of the things that makes Trophy Club unique. I think that we've had some personalities get in the way, and what I want to do is try to pull those people together, certain stakeholders that have been sort of the leaders of this from the beginning, and pull those folks together with the mayor and the Parks and Rec liaison, councilmember Schaffner, and say, "Okay, how do we, how do we make some lemonade out of this?" Because I don't think anybody, from what I hear from council, is that, you know, I don't think anybody wants to throw the project out. But I think there are some things that need to be hashed out. For example, who is the entity that will manage it? I don't have that answer, and as the council have said, it started with a community group. What community group that is, I think, has yet to be determined, but I think there's a lot of good people here that want to make it successful. So let's try to put away certain agendas and egos, and let's work together to make something that really can be a very special place for lots of people in the community. So what I, what I would like to do is Adam and Stephen Glickman is going to pull together the folks who have really been part of this spearheading it, the, you know, either it's Veronica and Burna and Lori and, and those folks, and I'm sure I left some people off, but let's try to pull those folks together, come up with some solutions, and it may be some compromises. I know that there's some disagreements about whether it's organic or not organic. I don't know what the answer is to that, and I don't think we're gonna solve that tonight, but I think it is something that can be better solved, sitting around the table with open minds and saying what's best for the community. And that's what I would say to the council.
Thank you, Steve. So Veronica, I know you got part of the way through your statement. If you want to come forward, I'll let you finish, and if you want to start over so that it makes sense, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. I don't have to repeat what's the first, my first ascended, first paragraph because that's just a fact, what is, was approved during the January 27th meeting. And subsequently, since January the 27th, and they were determined, there's a community garden association will be formed as a nonprofit. I don't know you heard about this, but it was in the talking, and to manage and sublease garden spaces. So according the KTCW to an agreement with the Girl Scouts and the Park and Rec Department, that our involvement in the, involvement in the community garden was unnecessary, and that it was the best interest for all of the parties involved for us to act only in an advisory capacity to the Girl Scouts. And it is our understanding that the citizen who had the vision of having this community garden are willing to establish a nonprofit association that will approve, that will operate the garden, and they will enter the lease with the town rather than KTCW. Furtherance, the goal of this KTCW provide the Park and Rec a documentation that guidelines in the general gardening languages for the agreements. If this is the town of Trophy Club believe it is the best interest for all parties for KTCW to be involved in the community garden, then we are willing to accept the role that makes senses for everyone involved, even if it's a temporary solution until the Community Garden Association is officially formed. So upon formation of the Community Garden Association, we could, with the town's approval, transfer the authority to this operation upon the approval, and this organization can be operate the garden on a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. So Veronica, just a second before you sit down, just to make sure I understood your Did you feel pressured to not be the person in charge, not be the organization to be in charge?
We were originally approved, we are committed since the beginning, and there were some, we are working, tried to working together, but we're seeing this, if there's a Community Garden Association be formed, we don't need to be there. It's not necessary to have two nonprofit organizations to run the garden. So we're willing to step out, let the Community Garden Association do their work. But originally, because we have a connection with master gardeners, master naturalists, denton, organic society, we can provide lots of knowledge and expertise to grow this community garden. That's what our goal is.
At least, that's what I thought and understood.
Right.
Back a long time ago. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So it's been fi- five months. How come the agreement was never done in the first place? We expected it would be done two to four weeks after we met.
Right. Since April, there's a, I mentioned about the Community Garden Association, they want to come up to form this, so we stepped down, we did not get involved with.
So, but before April, it, did, did you have any talk about? So I'm guessing there were personality issues and you decided to step back from the very beginning? Because this, this happened in the end of February.
Right. Between January 27th and April the 13th, and there were discussions between the parties back and forth, but we never reached the agreement.
Okay.
So, yes, thank you, Tim. So I guess one of the things we don't know at this point is, is this other organization that's being talked about, Community Gardeners Association, number one, is it actually formed legally? And two, is there anybody here from that group that can speak about that organization?
I don't know.
No? Adam, what do you know about that? I mean, Stephen, do you know anything?
I don't know. What I know about this is I've heard what has been stated, that there is supposedly a community garden association that it would like to be formed, but I don't know any specifics on it. I don't, I don't know who those individuals are, but maybe council members know. I've just heard that that is an option.
Okay. So I think Philip maybe had his hand up, and then did Greg, and then...
I have, I have some questions, not of Veronica, but of Adam. What is left to do? Because when I go out there, it's obviously like Garrett said, it's nothing from what we made the motion, but then I read where you said that we are in the process of, this was June 1st, we're in the process of registering for lottery winners, and we'll be searching or reaching out to them tomorrow to process the registrations. I will be finding out from council what day we'll work for ribbon cutting and update tomorrow, hopefully. That was June 1st. So, I mean, is it complete? Is it not complete? Is there a lot more to do? I'm kind of baffled on where we're at.
No, I think, and, and anybody can speak, is I think you were within two days of completion.
Okay. So what's left?
What's left is, what's left on the existing site with the original setback would be to, the, the beds were all pre-built, so I think they were all out there.
Right.
All filled.
No, they weren't filled. We stopped that. The beds need to be filled. The hedges would be, there'd be hedges that would be installed in the, the back of it as far as the, the back, the back part. There was gonna be an arbor. Tell me if, I mean, I'm...
It was, it was installed, the arbors, and the colonized gardens already planted.
The fences. Okay. So there's, there's not gonna be a fence?
The, the original motion that council made, I believe I speak correctly, that the fence that we're gonna put in was not allowed by the, the PD? I don't know if that's the PD or not, not police, the plant development.
CR, it's not any PD.
CR, I'm sorry. Okay. I was thinking gates and stuff. The CR. So that wasn't allowed by the CR. A wrought, wrought iron fence, you could come back and put in a wrought iron fence around it. I don't think...
So that's not gonna be locked up? That, that's just an open space?
Why did we have a, a site plan with that proposal for that fence brought to us?
If I remember, what I remember is that we talked about a split rail fence.
Yeah, we discussed split rail.
And when Garrett talked about locking it, I'm going, "Well, I don't know how you lock a split rail fence because you can crawl between the two split rails," or I, some people can jump over the two split rails, not me, but...
I mean, I've never seen a split rail fence in any of our zoning districts either, but I'm not, I'm not in the position to enforce that.
There was one at...
There's one at Meadow Creek.
Lakeview Elementary had one at one time in their garden.
Yeah, but I mean, we approved a plan that was brought forth by people.
We were told the split rail fence was, the split rail fence was not allowed. So it could not be installed, split rail fence, that's what...
I guess my question is, if that was not allowed, it seems like that that would have been brought back to us, you know, because we did make the motion. The motion was out there to put a fence in. If it's not allowed, then it probably should be brought back to us saying, "Okay, council, this is not allowed. What would you like to change? Or how would you like to go forward?" I, I don't think that there's any locks on the water, which is again, something, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, what was presented to us, and one of the, one of the things, are we filling the dirt inside of the, the boxes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See, in the presentation, that was not our responsibility. And so I guess, I don't know, I'm like Garrett, I have no idea what is our responsibility, what's not our responsibility, and, and I think that's why, where we're at is...
but I'm not, I'm not in the position to enforce that.
There was one at...
There's one at Meadow Creek.
Lakeview Elementary had one at one time in their garden.
Yeah, but I mean, we approved a plan that was brought forth by people.
We were told the split rail fence was, the split rail fence was not allowed. It could not be installed, split rail fence, that's what...
I guess my question is, if that was not allowed, it seems like that that would have been brought back to us, you know, because we did make the motion. The motion was out there to put a fence in. If it's not allowed, then it probably should be brought back to us saying, okay, council, this is not allowed, what would you like to change? Or how would you like to go forward? I don't think that there's any locks on the water, which is again, something, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, what was presented to us, and one of the, one of the things, are we filling the dirt inside of the boxes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, see, in the presentation, that was not our responsibility. And so I guess, I don't know, I'm like Garrett, I have no idea what is our responsibility, what's not our responsibility. And I think that's why, where we're at is that we really want to nail down an agreement, because I'm almost like Jim, this is going to be ours. Two years from now, it's going to be all staff doing this. And that's, that's not what we want. You know, we want this to be a community garden, not a staff garden, not a, you know, town of Trophy Club garden. And so, I agree with Stephen, it needs to go, we need to refer this back and just stop, and take a pause and get it right.
All right. So Greg had his hand up, and then Garrett.
I guess what I'm shocked at is that we have an organization that wants to take this over, and they don't show up here tonight. Who's to say they're going to show up at your meeting, Stephen? We've already spent over the $3,300 that we proposed. I think the reality is, the town's going to run this, we might as well do it now.
Okay, Garrett?
Okay, so Philip, you made some good points. And I go back to how did we even get started without an agreement? But we put a catch-all in this, so that Greg and Philip, y'all both made a comment, we don't want this to be a government project. And anybody who knows me, and y'all don't come to these, knows that I'm not a big fan of government, even though I set up here. You're not like government projects on any level, like citizen projects. But we put a catch in this motion, if anybody's read the motion. And I don't know if y'all know what I'm talking about, but every year, Keep Trophy Club Wild would come back and report to us.
Yes.
Reason for that is, if this project goes bad, we can just take a bulldozer out there and scrape it over and say, it's not working. You'll have to look at it from our perspective. We haven't put a plant in the ground, and it's not working. I'm all in favor of this. Now let me tell you this, I'll tell you guys what I tell my children. You guys can go swim in the pool outside, but as soon as you get in a fight and you can't get along, everybody's out of the pool. That's the catch-all that's in here. Well, you're my next neighbor, so you hear my kids playing in the pool. But, so I don't get out there really quick, I let them fight for a while. So, you let people get after it for a while, but I'm telling y'all, the reason that report back once a year is in there is so that we have the ability to pull the trigger and say, this is no longer viable. I never thought that it'd be people not agreeing with each other. I thought it would be that there were weeds, and it didn't look good, and all that kind of stuff. So, please don't make us say, get out of the pool. And please don't use a lot of Stephen's time on this. My gosh, he has very important things to do. That's all I have to say.
So I'm going to come to you, Veronica. What I heard you say is, your organization is willing to sign an agreement, and if at some point, there's another organization that's more appropriate...
Right, we'll step down.
You're willing to step back if that one was to happen.
Correct. That's why, this is what we committed on the January 27th, we want to do that. We want to keep it going because we did the research in the area, community gardens, they are all doing the same practice, the F501C3, nonprofit running all the community garden, not the government. So this is more appropriate for the nonprofit because they have expertise, experiences to do that. And not just only the town has put in there, the fund we raised, we have put into the garden, buying the arbers and putting the pollinator gardens. So we have spent quite a bit of money into that garden. We don't want that one to fall. That's our goal is, try to keep it going, and get all the community gardeners to get involved.
Okay. All right, so I appreciate that.
Mayor, Bonnie has signed up saying that she would like to address some of the councils.
Who would?
Bonnie, I just sent you.
Okay, all right, I'll refresh. All right, so I had a number of people sign up to speak, and if this is pertinent to who's in charge, then I allow you to speak. But I think if it's not, then I don't want to open this up so that everybody begins to talk for 10 minutes about this. So is it pertinent to that, Bonnie? Okay.
Yeah, it's a...
Okay. All right, so Bonnie, if you want to come up to talk about that. State your name and your address, please.
Bonnie Seraphine, 9 Lono Drive. The organization, the reason I didn't jump up when you first made your comment is if they're an organization, why didn't they present themselves? We were just coming up with options. This garden has been a living, breathing thing. I mean, it's evolving. We've learned a lot, too. None of us were experts going into this. I don't think any of us pretended to be experts either. So as you, like anything, just like in a job, you work at something, you have struggles, you have hurdles, you overcome them, you move on to the next item. And you learn and you grow as you go along. That's how I felt that, I'll speak for myself. That's how I saw this project at every step of the way. Yes, there's been challenges, just as you all are seeing some of those now. I don't want to bring those all out and hash those now. I think that your idea was a good one to sit down with the two Stephens. That being said, the garden organization was something that came up from our experience. It was an option, we thought, that at some point would be presented to you all. We are not there, we weren't there. It was just something that we saw as an option because of how we learned, moving forward, that the garden would need to run. And so, in order to keep it out of your hands, we thought it might be a good option to have a community garden association, because someone needs to be there all the time. I mean, you don't want it to be an eyesore, you don't want it to have this happen every time there's an issue. You need someone who's hands-on at all times. That was part of our original agreement with council. Veronica made it very clear that although Keep Trophy Club Wild would be the entity, she would still need lead gardeners and the such to handle the day-to-day operations. At no time, I was not under the impression that she, Keep Trophy Club Wild, would be running the day-to-day operations of this garden. In order for it not to be a problem, those of us that are involved in the project saw the need for there to be another entity that took on those tasks. So the day-to-day operations, handling the rules, handling any conflicts, a disruptive or non-compliant gardener, these are things that we saw that Keep Trophy Club Wild is not going to be able to do on a daily basis when their main focuses are other areas of Trophy Club. And again, that was stated in the council meeting, that there would be a, or maybe more than one lead gardener that would have to run the operations of this garden. That being said, as we grew and moved forward, whether we had hurdles or not, as we gained experience in this project, we saw the need for that, to have an establishment that, almost like onsite, that would be handling this, to keep it out of this sort of forum for petty, you know, things or what have your. And maybe yearly, that organization would be the organization that would come before you and update you and give you information, or whatever it is that, you know, we needed to do. It was never formed, so if, I'm sorry that people may think that it was formed. It's not formed, we've not presented it to you. It was, we did gather information and put some information together, but we didn't come out with that as, hey, we're now the new, we're now the new organization, and Keep Trophy Club Wild's out. Keep Trophy Club Wild is a wonderful resource. We would not like them to go away, even if an association was to get involved. Keep Trophy Club Wild does have the resources that they do claim from our, from your original approval council that you remember so well. I mean, they have the master gardeners, they have a lot of other resources, but they, but they're not going to be in that garden every single day managing the tenants of the garden and handling the day-to-day rules. So that's where we were going with that. I apologize if you all think that that entity actually happened and is somehow established.
I appreciate you clarifying that. We really needed to know. Do you have a question for Bonnie, or can she say?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Wait a minute.
I do.
I'm sorry.
I guess, hopefully it's not more than a comment. But I looked at the veterans park, and it was in disarray. And one of the reasons it was, because it was good intentions by private organizations, and it became a subsidiary of one, and then people moved away, and the town wound up taking it over. And I just look at this the same way. You have, everyone is going to have good intentions, two or three people. At the end of the day, the town is going to run this, with hopefully individuals volunteering their time to help the town. Now, if we don't want to do that, that's a different story. But that's the way I see this. At the end of the day, that's what's going to happen here.
Well, and I agree with you that people do come and go, and that that can create a problem when you have a smaller entity. But I think it would be important, and that's something that we were talking about as a group, that having active gardeners, you know, as a big part of this, is also important. I mean, there are people that care, they're there every day. They're able to watch over their neighbor and those sorts of things. But there would also, you know, that wasn't the end-all, be-all. There was also, you know, there should be a, you know, I don't know what to call it, a governing body, you know, a governing body that wouldn't be you. That's what our thought was.
So my question would be, the governing body, would that be the lottery winners that all get together? Or is it, and who are, who was this group?
Mr. Lamont, haven't gotten that far. I mean, I'm willing to be one of those people, and I think we have a few that are willing to be those people. But in the future, governing bodies change. I mean, your people change, just as your council changes. I mean, that's going to change, yes. But I mean, hopefully, done properly, there will be things in place that will make that establishment run correctly.
And you realize there's going to be responsibility, liability?
Oh, we realize the responsibility.
So just so you're all aware of it, I want to come back and say, oh, you know what, I didn't know all the obligations we were required to do and meet, and we're going away, like Trophy Club Wild.
Well, and hopefully, we would bring that, as we're doing here today, and you would be able to...
Just want to be clear, so when you get into a meeting, there's no shock treatment here, that, oh, I didn't know we had an insurance policy, or we're responsible if somebody sticks a fork in the ground.
Well, that would be, that would probably be a deciding factor right there.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. So Ryland, and then Garrett, I guess.
Yeah. So to build upon what Bonnie just said, the things that she described, from our perspective here, and correct me if all of you didn't feel the same way, but the impression that we got was that regardless of who was, whose hands were in the dirt, and what organization they belong to, that it was Keep Trophy Club Wild that was responsible for general management. I have right here, I'm going to read you guys something. Keep Trophy Club Wild will provide general management and resources, legal support, financial support, master gardener and naturalist expertise, and coordination, collaboration. That's from a blog article posted after we approved this project in January. The understanding was that, that was, that was what Keep Trophy Club Wild's role was going to be, and that's why we had required that the agreement would be with them. And it's up to them if they delegate it to someone else or whatever. Someone has to be responsible when you're in our position. So I, I, I just want to tell Bonnie that what you just said is not falling on deaf ears, it all makes a lot of sense. But from our perspective, what you just described is what we all thought we had required, and we had hoped that the agreement would delineate those things. And so I think that's, that's, I don't think we're far off from our desires, I just think there's been a significant error in execution here. Garrett?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would add to that, and I echo it 100% is, the only thing that's occurred now is that we're getting in the weeds with you guys. And Greg, I disagree. This is not a veterans memorial. This is the first warning when you scream at the kids in the backyard, stop fighting. The next time, my vote is to bulldoze this thing. I'm telling you, if we can't get along, we're not, we're not playing in the pool. We're going to give you guys a chance, but I'm sorry, we cannot spend these men's hours, 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 doing something like this. I'm just, I'm all for the garden, I think it's beautiful, I love it. But no, I don't want the town taking this over. We don't need another town project. This is a citizens' project. I don't want to hear about all this stuff. Y'all get along. Build y'all's garden.
Jim?
Yeah, I do again have to echo what Councilman Reed just said. I disagree with Mayor Portemamont. I do not want this to become a town project. This is a community garden, and that's what it needs to stay. If it becomes anything else, just bulldoze it like, like Councilman Reed said. And since we've gone around this and there's no more speakers, I'd like to make a motion at this time. And I move that we refer this item to the town manager to finalize an agreement with appropriate organizations to satisfy the original motion of January 27, 2015, and to work with concerned and involved citizens to develop a solution to areas of concern, and bring this item back to council if no apparent solution is reached.
All right, yeah, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it so we can have a discussion.
All right, do you have a second from Councilmember Reed? Jim, you made the motion, do you want to make any other comments?
No, sir.
I have a comment.
So Ryland and I, I don't know who was speaking down here, Tim, I think, are you speaking? Okay.
I would, I would say what, I'm in the general direction that Jim's taking us, I think. I want to get this in Stephen's hands to mold some kind of solution, because that's, that's up to you to figure out. What I, what I don't want to do at this point is authorize Stephen to enter into an agreement with anyone yet. And so that's why I wouldn't support Jim's motion, just because you said specifically that he could enter into an agreement with another party. Because the thing that really gives me pause is that Adam Adams, our Parks and Rec Director, sent us a timeline of everything yesterday, and I went through it all. And Bonnie's first discussion with Adam was a year ago. Keep Trophy Club Wild's first discussion with Adam was 11 months ago. So, and we approved this five months ago, almost now, four and a half months ago. So that means there was a seven-month period when everybody here all had opportunity to discuss and vet the ideas between themselves before it came to us. And with all of that time and all of that discussion, it's still, the structure, for whatever reason, has failed. So I want to, at this point, given that we've had so many residents, I mean, we take on a lot of different issues up here that affect a lot of things in terms of town finances and significant decisions. And this one is a recreational thing, and it's not going to cost a whole lot of money in the big picture. And I've gotten so much feedback, way more feedback than when we make a $10 million decision. And so I want to vet who's going to be responsible. When I take my little girl to Harmony Park, I have two, but one of them doesn't walk. So the one that runs, when I take her to the playground, I want that thing looking good, I want to have faith that it's going to be there. And right now, I feel really shaky. So I just, I want to have plenty of time. So while I agree with your sentiment, Jim, what I want to give Stephen the ability to do is, rather than enter into an agreement with someone, to vet our options and come back to us with some, a recommendation or something like that.
I'll say, Tim, and then me, and then whoever else.
One is, you know, I feel really bad for the Girl Scouts, you know. There's nothing worse than doing all the work, and then people can't get along, and you can't finish what you started. We've proven that the town can't handle this. Adam's a great guy, works really hard, but he's stuck his foot in it here, trying to help all the personalities. If the town was running it, that's just going to happen. He's going to have so many different personalities complaining, it's not going to stop. I'm in the retail world myself. If I sign a lease, I'm the person responsible for that lease. Whoever signs this lease with the town, they're in charge. They make the rules, and that's who you listen to. If it's Keep Trophy Club Wild, they're in charge. That's it. That's who we're going to hold responsible. That's who should be responsible. Having subgroups behind that, you know, that's like, we'll talk about Starbucks, that's like, you're saying the manager at Starbucks is in charge. No, you have to follow the rules of the people who hold the lease, the owners. So if it's Keep Trophy Club Wild, you have to put in some good policies, some good procedures, and run the thing correctly. You can't just sub it out. We, I mean, or we are going to bulldoze it. That being said, I mean, we have to give these girls a chance, you know, to get this going, you know, so we have to move it forward. But you can't go in and try to have two different groups, and the infighting has to stop. If you don't like what Trophy Club Wild does, if they're the leaseholder, then you don't have a plot. That's as easy it is, as it is. I mean, if the other group is in charge and somebody else doesn't like it, then they don't have to have a garden there. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. We can't please everybody.
I had discussions and email exchanges with Greg Lamont and Jim Perrow about a motion to refer. And, and I didn't catch all of what you said, Jim, but in general, it sounded a lot like what I was suggesting. And a couple of things I was trying to accomplish. One is, if we refer to Stephen, and Keep Trophy Club Wild is still willing to do it, and we can get an agreement, then the only thing that comes back to us is the agreement for final approval. Because we didn't give Stephen the authority to sign the agreement. So I think Stephen will come back and say, here's the agreement, council, you got to ratify it, you got to approve it. I may be wrong, but...
You're correct.
I think that's what's going to happen. So that piece would come back to us. But what I was trying to do in the motion was, is if that worked out, and the organization could somehow solve some of the other issues, which the motion included the bodies that were working on it, along with concerned... were working on it along with concerned citizens, if all that could be worked out, then all I have to do as a council is a broad picture that says, approve the document. Because I've already said, I want you to do it, and here's the organization to do it. But I didn't say Keep Trophy Club Wild, because I didn't know if that was workable or not, because I hadn't actually talked to Veronica, was her willingness to do that, nor had I really visited with Patricia to say, is that, can we work out that that organization signs some kind of operating lease, or whatever that might be, of the garden? Because I don't think, I know that yet. So I wanted to give the town manager some flexibility, so that if that fell through, and there was this other organization that did actually become a legal entity, that he could head that direction and bring it back to us to say, here's what my recommendation is, we worked out our issues, and here's the agreement. Because I didn't want to say, I couldn't predict what Veronica and her organization might or might not do, but I trusted Stephen and Stephen and Adam to work those issues out. So I support that motion if it's still the concept of what we're talking about.
Can I revise the motion to incorporate what's been brought forward?
So, just one second. Philip had the chair, and then I'll come back to, and then I, Garrett, are you pointing to Mr. Powell?
Uh, no, I was just going to make a comment.
Oh, okay. Mr. Powell, I think I just wanted to say something. I'll let you stay, just a minute, let these two people speak. Mr. Powell.
Let me ask this, on the motion, from what I understand, you, you say that, that all facets of what we approved be, what, what did you say in that part?
To, well, I just revised it after, after Council.
Well, there is no revision.
So did you change it?
You can't revise.
Well, I revised what I was, what I'd prepared, so.
Well, what did you say?
Can you do Ctrl-Z and it go back to what you asked?
To, well, it was to finalize an agreement, was the original statement, and then develop a solution to areas of concern and bring the item back to council if resolutions cannot be reached.
But I thought you said something about determine that all facets of the project is approved by council.
No.
Yeah, I get, I get where you're going with, where you're going with this is to make sure that the previous motion that we voted on is.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is, so there are things that can't be done. Obviously, we've said that there, there's, so I don't want to be locked into.
We need to address that somehow.
Right, I don't want to be locked into that, you know, that motion, but I thought that's what I heard you say.
So what, what I've got here are, I've, I've got seven.
To satisfy the original motion of January 27.
That's it, right there. That's to satisfy.
Satisfy the original motion of January 27.
And we were told we can't.
All right, well, let me, I've got seven objectives. The first is, the council motion that was made on January 27th. What was made, what was required, where do they stand? That's one objective. And if there's something that's different, we need to let you know what that is. And then we need to ask you, what do you want to do about it? That's number one. Number two is, we need to develop a meeting with stakeholders and develop a schedule. Number three, we need to develop who is going to manage the garden and develop a lease agreement. That's four, develop guidelines for the garden operational rules. Is, is it organic versus non-organic? Hours of operation, watering schedule, non-conforming gardeners, et cetera. I can't think of all those things that might be there, but I'm sure there's a few. Fifth, we need to meet with the neighbors and let them know what's happening, keep them involved in the process. Six, we need to provide recommendations to the town council. And then seven, based upon those recommendations and feedback from council, you either authorize to execute a lease agreement with the appropriate entity, or we make an alternative decision at that point.
All right, so Jim, you had a motion to refer. It did receive a second. It sounded like you were thinking about altering that motion. So do you wish to alter the motion?
Yes, sir.
So do you want to restate it, and then we'll either see if the second agrees to it, or if it's an amendment?
Okay. To incorporate the two points that were raised by the other members of council, this is what I propose as a motion. I move that we refer this item to the town manager to draft an agreement with appropriate organizations to work with concerned and involved citizens to develop a solution to areas of concern and bring these items back to council for final approval.
I, I, I support that. But can I be sarcastic for a second, Nick, and ask why we need to have details if nobody's going to follow them?
So I had, who seconded, I think?
Me.
Jim, okay. All right, Garrett, so did you, you agree to the change? Okay.
I'm not sure I agree. We need a lot of details, though, in our motions. We can just be real general.
I, I was trying to be more general and just throw it to Stephen and worry about it later. Okay, now, Mr. Powell stood up. I think he wanted to speak. Mr. Powell, if you want to come forward, identify yourself and your address. Try to keep your comments to the point of where we're headed to refer it and work out the issues, if you could.
They will be very short. My name is Ted Powell. I live at 12 Reading Court, in Trophy Club, and I am probably the most concerned citizen that you've heard from. And the reason being is the garden is right at my fence, four feet away to be the number I've been given, whether it is or not. But I just wanted to make sure, and, and your point number five, I believe, said, to get the concerned citizens involved, right? And I just wanted to make sure that I was, I was clear on that, because I wasn't until I heard you read your, your objectives.
I have, I have meet with neighbors.
Yeah, so just, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that, all right? Very well. And I thank you, everybody, for, for your involvement in this. I know it's taken a lot of your time. Garrett, you were very clear, but I do appreciate it. So I look forward to working with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I recognize that I had these other citizens who wanted to speak, and I appreciate that. Ted was one of those, Lori Hicks was one, Madison Davis, Randall Davis, all wanted to speak. I'm going to try to keep it to the point of, do you think we're headed in the right direction? Do you think something you have that's germane to the direction of the motion to refer, to try to shorten it if you want to? However, of those young ladies that are Girl Scouts, I would let you speak if you wanted to speak, no matter what you wanted to say. Do any of you want to speak?
Scared now.
Scared now. I didn't want to scare you, but I think, I think this council was all in favor of trying to work something out to give you an opportunity for a service project. And, and I wasn't a Girl Scout for obvious reasons, but I was a Boy Scout. And the project you're working on, I think, probably had an element of requirement that you did something in the community. It wasn't, I'm going to do it at home. Is, am I, am I right there? So it's not like you could go do this at home and get this, is it Silver Award? Am I saying the right words? And so that's part of what's happening here, and it might very well be that other young ladies who get into the Girl Scout troop each year want to try to get their Silver Award, and are back up there going, I want to do this as a project, is to plant, harvest, maintain, learn. So I think I was motivated by some of that, and I like the idea in general. All right, so any of you want to speak? Okay? Oh, yes, no? So, okay, well, wait a minute, maybe all, okay, here we go. All right, identify yourself and your address, and then speak.
Okay, I'm Lori Hicks. My address is 119 Creek Courts Drive. That's also the address for Girl Scout Troop 3909, which I am the leader. I'll make this quick. As you know, Girl Scouts plan this project to earn their girls, their Silver Award. They began this project a year ago by touring local community gardens, doing much research. They planned the garden after that, then began getting park board and town council approval. During this time, they raised funds through bake sales, cookie sales, and reached out for sponsors. Since then, the site has been transformed from a rocky bed of weeds to a neat, orderly garden. At this point, very little is left to complete, just posting signs, filling beds, planting the shrubs, and putting up a water collection bin. We are willing to alter the garden and hope that some compromise can be found. Even though you said this isn't a neighbor issue, we would never have known about this council meeting discussion had we not addressed the issue through emails to council and Facebook posts. And I'd like to add, bulldozing this project would cost more because we have $2,000 at least donated by private citizens and companies. I would like to encourage all that are involved in the process of negotiations, whether it has to do with neighbors or management contracts, to please consider compromising so that this project can be completed. I know that the community would appreciate it. I would like to mention that the dirt in the parking lot could wash away if we get any more rain, or it could be taken by anyone. I encourage you to allow the dirt to be put into the beds to preserve it. I'd like to introduce two scouts that are working on the project, Naomi Hicks and Sydney Pharaoh.
Hi, I'm Naomi. Thank you for the support of the garden. We started this in the hopes of bringing the community together. We have worked extremely hard on this project. We put a lot of our own time into, into it by planning, fundraising, and building. We hope to be able to finish building the garden after we resolve this problem. Thank you for your time and attention. One of the things that I think some of us, well, might have forgotten is that this is some of our silver projects, and we're trying really hard to make this work. And I think it would be that we, I think one thing that we've forgotten is this is a community effort to try to bring the community closer together, and to trying to make this like a group effort, trying to bring the community closer together. So this community was like located in somewhere that everybody can enjoy it and see it, and maybe make them happier, or something, it's a great sight to see instead of seeing when you walk by the park or whatever, you just see rocks and weeds. And I would like to say that we've worked really hard on planning this physically, working on it, and we would hate to see this project just moved away. Thank you, we appreciate the town council supporting this project.
Thank you. The other young lady want to speak?
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure she does. Are you being forced to speak?
I have a speech, but I don't want to talk. Can you read it? I want to say. I have to read it, but I don't want to read it. I have to speak. I don't want to talk.
Okay.
Can I read her speech? I haven't seen it.
Sure.
Okay. Her name is Madison Davis. She lives at 215 Oakmont Drive, and she's part of Girl Scout Troop 3909. Although I am a Girl Scout that is trying to complete my Silver Award, my main motivation for building this garden was to bring the town of Trophy Club closer together. The inspiring ladies and gentlemen that I have been teaming up with have put so much effort into making this idea into a reality. I alone have put over 60 hours of work into this. We were so close to finishing the garden when I became aware of a resident's complaint. I don't understand why they would object to the opening of a community garden. I think I speak for a bit, a lot of the town, when I say that I want this garden to succeed. We are willing to compromise in order to keep the garden. One final note, in my language arts class, I learned how to break down words to find their meanings. So the word "community" means common unity, essential togetherness. I just want strangers and friends to be like family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate you coming. Lori, if you don't mind, I got a couple of questions. Is there a deadline on this award?
Um, yes, but it's not until September of 2016.
Oh, okay.
So we have plenty of time.
You mean on, on them completing their project? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right.
So just quickly, I'd like to say to the Girl Scouts, you know, you did a lot of hard work, and, and I think you'll have a real sense of accomplishment. As most of us as adults know, when you have some obstacles and you overcome those obstacles, when this does finally come to fruition, you'll have an even greater sense of accomplishment, that you'll see that you've, you've learned a lot more through this process, so.
All right. Mr. Powell?
Mr. Mayor, could I just make?
Come to the microphone so we get it recorded.
I would just like to make one comment, in that we had asked that, that any comments that we have are, are related directly to this. Couple of things that I questioned about remarks that were just made, and that is the fact that, the, the request to go ahead and fill the boxes with dirt. When you fill those boxes with dirt, then everybody's going to say, well, wait a minute, it's too much trouble now if we have to move them. So I would suggest that we not do anything until we come to an agreement where we're going and how we're going to do it. The other one was that one of the scouts made a comment about everything's moving smoothly until this neighbor or resident raised the issue. And I believe that's my right, right? And we need to entertain it, and I've said before, and I've told you, I'm willing to work with this, but I would like to have, you know, make sure that we all are in agreement and all understand exactly what my concern is.
Okay, so I have, thank you, Mr. Powell. I've broken the rules by allowing a discussion about the main motion or the main item when the motion to table was on the floor, I mean, to refer was on the floor, and, no, you would have called everybody else out of order. They were out of order. I just allowed it, and.
This is impeachment time.
And Mayor Protam Lamont didn't stop me, and so what does that say about Mayor Protam Lamont?
Because I'm looking at impeachment here.
Then you would be in charge.
Okay. You can also see that we have fun making fun of each other about, about things. You have to somehow do that from time to time. So it really is, there's a motion to refer with a table. I've tried to give some latitude, because I really want some polite debate comments about it. I support the motion to refer to the town manager. I realize that puts one more thing on their task to do, but the original motion said, get an agreement. I go back to that, that I think everybody has said. I think we just failed to make that happen, and we need to make that happen. And Veronica, I appreciate your willingness to step up. We probably put you on the spot before, and you stepped up to say, yes, I'll do it once before, so I appreciate that. All right, are you ready to vote, council? Or, I don't know if I missed anybody that needs to come in. All right.
Can we, I know I seconded it, can you just refresh us as to what?
The motion is.
Repeat the motion.
I will surely ask Mr. Perrow to refresh.
This has been the longest, I think, debate.
Please read it again, Mr. Perrow.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we refer this item to the town manager to draft an agreement with appropriate organizations and work with concerned and involved citizens to develop a solution to areas of concern and bring this item back to council for final approval.
One point of clarification. So we are, this project is on pause until this is completed. So there's a motivation for everyone to figure it out. Agreed, or is that what this motion means? Because I don't.
The way I interpret it is that it's on pause till we solve that problem.
Because it doesn't say whether this is moving forward or not. Okay, I just want to point a clarification.
What I was getting from council was, there's no agreement. Why isn't there an agreement? I think you, most of you said that tonight, and I think that's real clear that we accomplished.
Why was there any work done?
Oh, yeah, I think we said that last one clear. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Lamont, do you have a?
You mentioned the word organizations. Should it be organization singular?
We, we're still in the flux stage, as I understand it, between Keep Trophy Club Wild and the Garden Club.
Well, that's an either/or. It's going to be one organization, just that you, I'm, I'm being a little picky here.
Well, I think that part of the purpose was, is there's a Girl Scout organizations, there's a Women's Club organization, there's a, a community garden.
Any interested parties.
There are organizations that are interested parties, and so it's just vague enough to let.
But I thought you said, I thought you said, sign an agreement with various organizations.
Draft an agreement with appropriate organizations.
Well, you don't want an agreement with different organizations, you want it with one. Who's in charge?
Well, I think we can, it, it's a motion to refer.
Huh?
It's a motion to refer. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. You're going to vote it up or down, whether you like the words or not. We're moving on. All in favor of the motion to refer, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I didn't see anyone opposed, I think it was unanimous. Whatever those words are. Everybody, thank you for coming, I'm, you know, I, this is part of what happens in government, so you've had a civics lesson also about this. You've learned something about how it works and, uh, you know, not everything always works perfect, but we surely are trying to make it better. So thank you very much. If any of you that came for this item want to leave, you're welcome to do so at this time. If you want to stay for the re- no, you can't. Council members cannot leave. Okay, thank you everybody, all right. Item three, receive an update from G S B S regarding the police town hall facility, discussion of update, timeline, and project schedule. You're on. Little did you know it was going to take an hour to get to you, did you?
You're a tough group tonight, can I maybe get on next council's agenda?
Oh, we've only started. You're next, you, you have no idea.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
Don't let him scare you, Tom.
Nick, it's a good thing we took out that employee guard vegetable guy. Idea we have it behind the, behind the town hall.
That was green space, though.
Mayor, council member, staff, Steve, you, Steven, you have anything you want to open with? All right. Uh, it's good to be here, thanks for having us. I'm going to spend a little time-
If you go too far, there is no signal on the front monitor. Everywhere else we have a signal.
I have one.
Okay, we'll watch the sign, I guess, unless somebody can fix it.
Do you want me to take a look at it?
Garrett, would you fix it for us?
Hush, he's in rare form.
You have a copy of everything I'm talking about?
We do, yes, we do. All right.
So first, I'm going to revisit a couple of site images, just want to refresh your memory. This, uh, if you follow the cursor here, this is the site that you've purchased, comes up in back of the residential property here, comes down, kind of cuts across here, and then in the back of the new hotel and around the water tower, about five acres. We presented these at the last meeting, um, but I, I want to refresh your memory, uh, in terms of some of the site, um, criteria. Uh, we have a couple of natural access, uh, points to the site, that would be the median cut here on Trophy Wood Drive. Uh, we have a shared access agreement coming up that the hotel's putting in that can get us to this, uh, southeast corner. And potentially, we could come off the, the drive on the east, eastern part of the property. Uh, we have grades of two to five percent in this lower, uh, bright yellow area, uh, in the, uh, uh, excuse me, two to three percent, uh, three to six percent in this middle area, uh, in excess of, uh, five to eight percent range here in the middle, and then up in this upper corner in excess of ten percent. Uh, so it, it's a challenging site in terms of the, the grade, but something we've, uh, we've worked out and we can handle. Briefly, uh, the tree cover, uh, kind of a grove of trees up here, uh, that sit off this, uh, residential property line. And then to refresh your memory, uh, our eastbound, uh, approach on one fourteen, this is kind of the view you see coming through the existing buildings. And our westbound view is, is shorter, and if you look, if you turn your head to the right, you're going to see up in this area of the site. A couple of site parameters, uh, we have a fifteen foot side building setback, uh, that's on the bottom in yellow. We have a thirty foot, uh, setback on the rear. The red area is a forty foot, uh, landscape buffer, buffer to the residential area. And we have a thirty foot, uh, front setback which is augmentated with an additional twenty-four foot front yard, so we have a fifty-four foot front yard in order to accommodate the required landscaping requirements of which fifty percent needs to be in the front yard. So we've moved the building to the east, which is actually a beneficial to us as we come off Trophy Wood Drive with the slope of the sites. We have a little more transition from the drive as we come through this median and down into the parking lot, so that helps us. We're going to try and save as many trees as we can, but we're going to disrupt a lot of those trees. Uh, as you can see, we, we've just kind of superimposed the, the existing tree line with the proposed footprint of the building, which we'll talk about in a minute in terms of, uh, its layout. There is a requirement, again, from your landscape code for about a hundred and twenty new trees for this project. About twenty-two of those in the parking lot, uh, seventeen of those around the perimeter of the site, and another eighty or so on the property. We'll be able to reduce that some degree by how many trees that are existing that we can save and count, and we haven't done that calculation yet. Uh, we do have some space on the east side, uh, if this is a five acre site, there's probably an acre and a half left, uh, that you, uh, have some flexibility with some other uses in the future if you choose to do that. We've set this up that we can have a fire lane coming through this parking lot here, the center parking lot, and coming back into this area and providing access if you choose to do that. So let's talk about the site a little bit. We, we were successful, we have, uh, our, our program that we walked away in March with, that, that we had tweaked with the staff and brought, uh, before you in March, was about twenty-three thousand eight hundred square feet. We're just under that now in terms of the square footage of the project at about twenty-three five. Uh, it's a one-story project, uh, given that twenty-three thousand feet, that's the most economical way to do this project and it fits on the site. We have a requirement for a hundred and thirty-three parking spaces. That includes a hundred and eighteen required by your city code, fifteen required by the, uh, police chief in terms of patrol cars, so that's the hundred and thirty-three spaces. Right now, we're providing about a hundred and forty-four spaces. Of that, forty-seven are in a, uh, secured lot that's on the east end of this new building. Uh, so that would be for patrol cars, for, uh, patrol private vehicles, uh, some key, uh, police staff, some other police vehicles, as well as some designated town hall staff. Uh, the balance of the front of this lot is primarily for visitors, or I would think that would tend to be the, the, the goal, and then we have, uh, parking down in this corner of the lot, kind of plan for staff with a side entry that comes up, uh, on a side door into the police area, uh, if the police chief can monitor that. So we meet the, we meet landscaping, we meet, um, all the setbacks, we're meeting the requirements of the secured parking, fire lanes, which we're bringing around and terminating at this point up here with the three hundred foot hose laid to the Trophy Wood Drive. We'll have an, one more point, we'll have an emerg- a, a secondary exit from the building at this point coming back here as well. Yes, Philip?
In the front, in the front of the building, I, I assume that's a retaining wall?
We are proposing, yes, for, uh, to elevate this building above the parking lot, uh, three to five feet. We have, we have not worked out those details yet. The more we can elevate that, that's to our advantage. We're going to target five feet because that's, uh, a thirty foot, it's a thirty inch ramp, and then a cutback for another thirty inch ramp, which is five feet. So that's the maximum we will want to do. We'll have steps coming up that. So it does a couple of things. Number one, it elevates that building and gives it more prominence on the site and from the freeway. And number two, it gives the building the security, um, security, uh, components that are important in terms of, uh, what we've learned from Homeland Security. So you can't have a car coming into that building. They have to go up the steps first, okay? Or over those retaining walls. If you've been to, to Jerry World out at the stadium, you'll see those retaining walls that are about so high. They're pretty, but they're there for to keep cars away from the building. Yes, Riley?
So, um, I guess the alternative, knowing the grade of the site, the alternative would have been to excavate in the back of the site as opposed to build up in the front of the site?
We're still going to be excavating.
And you're still going to have to excavate, excavate.
We're trying to balance that.
Yeah, so what you're doing here is, it sounds to me like you're kind of shooting the middle a little bit, which I assume, or I'm hoping is a cost-effective method of getting the, the grade where you want it as well.
Correct. On the floor plan, we've had, uh, meetings with staff, we met a couple of weeks ago with the department heads, uh, and went through this plan. And I, I'd say confidently, I think we're ninety-five percent there. I'm sure there's a little tweaking to do yet. So we have on the left side, the blue area is the, uh, town hall. And it is, hold on a minute, in terms of square footage. Town hall is seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight square feet. That's the blue area. The green area is the, uh, police administration. It's eight thousand one hundred and forty-four square feet. The gray, gray area on the top is a common to both buildings, both departments, uh, break area, uh, private water closet and lactation room that's about a thousand feet. So that totals twenty-three thousand, just short of five hundred square feet. Oh, I left out the, the yellow space. The yellow space is public space, it's common space. It is six thousand four hundred and seventy-two square feet. In recent meetings with, with staff, uh, we worked this pretty hard, we think we came up with some great ideas. Number, and there's two of them. We were able to adjust this plan in that, that training room could be used for other things. So we have a training room, an E O C center, a voting area, and a community room that's about a thousand square feet. Uh, that's, that can be accessed directly from the public space, past the toilets, public toilets, or it can be accessed from the P D area. So quite frankly, I think that's a win-win, that's a great room for a lot of things. Uh, secondly, we, we took a major conference room, uh, that's going to, that can be used by town hall and/or by police, but more importantly, by council for, uh, some of your sessions and for, um, um, executive sessions. And also serve as a community room, so we've made it accessible from the town hall lobby as well. And then thirdly, we, we, we are still considering the council chambers, unless you direct us otherwise, as a flat floor and with a partition that will close this side of the dais and can also be used as a meeting room of sorts. So we have a lot of flexibility in this space. So that's a, kind of the overall on the plan. After some gyrations in our office, um, this is our latest greatest. And we'll continue to work on this if we can get some high fives tonight or some other direction. Uh, we, we envision this building, uh, again, single story, um, a sloping metal roof. Uh, we're taking the center area, that public space, and popping it up, uh, to about twenty feet at the front, where you see that glass on the bottom area. Uh, trying to get some light, uh, on the west side of this building, which faces your main driveway on Trophy Wood Drive and gives it some character. You can see the attempt we've made here, uh, to step on the left, stepping down, coming across flat, and stepping down then again to the parking lot. Uh, so, you know, we, we could see four to five feet in each of those steps.
So the top view is a?
Side.
That's a side view looking from Trophy Club Drive toward the end of the building, so looking east.
Trophy Wood Drive.
Trophy Wood Drive.
East side. West side of the building.
West side of the building.
Looking east, but you're seeing the west-
Looking at the water tower, so we're looking east.
That's what I thought.
The west side of the building.
So on that right, where it looks like glass, that in essence is not the end of the building, it's halfway down the building where you had the-
That's correct. That would be, uh, council chambers and your entry lobby, and then in the back where that break area is on the left.
What's the height overall of, of the typical office area?
For about twelve feet to that eve.
Thank you.
That gets us some ten foot ceilings and some larger spaces, nine in most of the offices. We envision this, and I'll show you an image in a minute, uh, we're thinking primarily stone, and we'll get back to you if, if you concur with that with some ideas. Not so unlike what you see on some of your, uh, privacy walls as you come into town. Larger block, not, not the smaller limestone, white chalk, but some of these larger blocks, uh, that we'd consider using. Go to another image. So thi- this, this is the east, if you're eastbound on the left, that's, you're going to have a couple of seconds to kind of see that image up there beyond that power pole. And if you're westbound, you're going to have about a second in between, uh, the hotel and the restaurant, or not restaurant, office building, to see that view up on the hill. And this is a, a little more refinement, and we'll continue to work. Uh, if you look on the right side, th- this is a project we did about five years ago, we used a larger stone, uh, probably about a foot high by eighteen to twenty-four inches long, full thickness of about three and a half to four inches. We like the scale of that. Uh, we would come back to you with, with some ideas in terms of what's rough, what might be a smooth coursing and, and some variations in that facade. So trying to respect the project budget, trying to be dynamic in terms of, uh, a city hall, a town hall, a, a joint facility, and, uh, falling within the confines of what our site requirements are. That's my spiel right now.
I have a thought while we're on this very image, the top left image, um, the lion's share of the glass right there in that center build, that center portion of the building. Aesthetically, I think it looks really good, but I, I want to make sure that we consider the fact that everything you see there is going to have a pretty predominant southwest exposure. I think, so we may want to consider other potential options there.
We do think the top left-
I, I think we are, um, we're going to be a little bit, if, if we're due, due north on, straight up on the screen, so we, we've actually shifted around a little bit toward the north. Point well taken, we're going to study that. Will we have sun shades, will we not? What's the kind of glass? The, the glass products have gotten so much better in the last five years than what we saw twenty years ago. But point well taken, Riley.
I'm always hot, so that's my responsibility to the world. Like when I drive by someone's house and all their windows face west, I just immediately feel horrible for them.
Also, council, I would, I would, I talked to Tom just very briefly this afternoon in looking at the layout, there, there are a couple of things that will change in terms of the way it's, the layout is. I know that the elected official office, um, we wanted to reorient- Wanted to reorient that a little bit.
I assume that's for me?
Yes.
There's a couple of things here and there, so it's not-
We didn't want the door to go out to police.
It still needs to be refined, but this is a couple iterations through, and we're still, we're still working on those tweaks.
I know we had a question, Tom. If you look at the, uh, council section, the semi-circle seats, was that a representation of the exact seats that could go in there, or was that just a general aspect?
Well, as Nick and I walked into here tonight, we were handing out your handouts, we had twelve, because that's what we thought the number was, and there were fifteen. So, we can get another one on this, and we can extend this half circle down to get another seat. So we can get fifteen here, we're showing eighty-four seats comfortably in this space, you have sixty here. We can still show the eighty-four comfortably and extend that another couple of feet, if that's your, if that's your goal.
Okay. So I know that was a question, so that, you picked up on that, and I appreciate that. What I have seen, where, where you have the folding partition that comes across between council chambers and council, is there any elevation change or?
We're, we're proposing two steps.
Okay, two steps, all right.
So you'll see we have two ramps. We have a ramp on the left to get from the count, to get from this floor up to your dais.
Right.
And then we have a ramp to go from the dais da- out the back to, uh, to get to your-
Break area.
Your break area to a, a water closet back there, and also to then the conference room there on the left for executive session or other-
That is titled "Community"?
Yes.
Tom, just, uh, to the left of the council seating area-
Tom, just to the left of the council seating area, there's a, that left-hand ramp and then there's a door that opens to the access to the dais. But I noticed there's no door to the community room from the council chamber, from the dais itself?
You're gonna, you're gonna exit on the right ramp and go down into the break area? And then on around.
There was no shortcut.
So it's not possible to put a door at the end of that ramp to go into the meeting room so you can go directly in there without having to disturb anybody who's?
You'd have two steps is the problem.
No, Jim, that's a good point. If, if we study this area right here, the land, the bottom landing, we, if we can rework this area, and right now this is the records area for a court, if we could rework this area just a little bit, potentially you could get into this space. So it's something we'll look at.
So you just walk from here right into the room?
Yeah.
And I think the comment I made about the elected official is that, I don't have a better solution, is the door should open out into the lobby as opposed to into the police lobby. Sure that looks the best, that it opens into the?
Plus your photograph would look better facing the main lobby as people walked in on the wall.
The other, the other thing I was curious about, in the public lobby where you have the AV room that's at a different angle than the wall behind it, seems like a strange space. And if I walk in the front door, I'm gonna look at this nice angles. Maybe that's good or bad to have the nice angles. But one of the thoughts I had was if on those two walls that are on either side of the AV, they're in the public lobby, if you created some type of closet storage, you, you were able to utilize some space. You always are looking for storage. I don't know if that means there are chairs that go there, tables that go there. That was just the thought because you have this kind of weird space. And then the other thought I had was, this goes to Stephen, is people are gonna walk in the building and they're not gonna see a person based on this design. So if you were building it, not that you want to staff it today, but if you were building this, would you be, would it be beneficial for future thought that somehow in that public lobby was an ability to have a reception area if you wanted it? If for nothing else, it was a place where information was displayed? So you walk in and got information.
Mayor, let me address a couple of things here that I think we can clean up. First of all, I think we need to make an attempt to get the door from the AV room into the council chambers.
Yes, I agree.
Because they have that interface with just what we saw here. Secondly, if we do that, then this wall becomes, can become a nice backdrop to something, whether it's the city emblems, city, city name, whatever it might be that you want to do there, artwork. But in, in the foreground of that, then you could have a desk or some, some built-in piece of furniture at some point in time for a receptionist if you choose to do that.
Okay? And does somebody else have their hand up that wanted?
That was me, but I was gonna say just what Tom brought up, so.
I got a question.
Yeah. Greg?
Permits and stuff like that, is there gonna be a separate entrance or they have to go?
Come again?
Permits, when somebody wants a permit or a building inspections and?
Greg, what we have over here is we have two permit windows right here on the left. And then we have the parks assistant here and then court records. So we try to keep all the transaction desks right here on this town hall side of the, of the, of the lobby.
Is there a need for two ramps? You have a ramp on each side of the council chambers? I mean, does that have to be there or just?
If, if you eliminated the ramp, for instance, on the right side and you went down the ramp to that community room, conference room, you'd have to go through that conference room to get to a break area and a toilet.
And if you were trying to use that training room as a community room, well, you wouldn't let them back into the break area anyway. You'd have them go to the restroom right outside their door.
So, I mean, that, that's?
It's an idea.
I'm not sure what Stephen and Stephen's ideas about that are. I'm sure we can talk about that circulation.
So I think Tim makes a good point. I'm gonna make sure I understand. So the ramp on the right, if we remove that ramp, the purpose for that ramp right now is to access the break area, correct?
Well, it's, it's an opportunity for you to get to a break area for coffee and snacks and also to that private toilet room.
Okay, so if, if, if we recaptured that space, repurposed that space and we went with Jim's idea of a, you kind of reworked that door down there at the bottom of the ramp, left a door at the back of that conference room, it would, we basically could recapture quite a bit of space here and we'd still have access.
We'll study that.
The, the lactation room, is that a, is that a wet area there? Is that a sink?
It will, it will have a sink and a small refrigerator in there.
Wouldn't it make a little more sense to maybe put that closer to the, is that a private, that's another bathroom on the other side? You just say, pull some of the space from there, I guess. Yeah, either there, that's what I'm saying. And then you have, you can pull space from in the middle there.
Just don't want to pinch down that break area too much.
Well, and, and to the right of the break area, you have kind of this L-shaped thing like that's kind of a?
That was the intention. That was the counter, the sink, microwave, fridge.
Yeah, so you could have put sink, fridge there. Okay. So?
I'm just trying to get rid of one of the ramps.
Where, where are cleaning supplies stored in the supply closet or?
We, we've had, we have one janitorial closet and that's on the PD side, on the extreme right, upper right.
Right now we have two. That's something that we need to change.
Oh, we were gonna take that out.
Yeah.
Is it still there? Okay. So the, the janitorial in the blue area, we had decided to take out.
So could we turn that into the lactation area?
Uh, yes. But I think Stephen wanted storage.
Well, let, I, you know, I saw this, this, you know, the same time kind of you guys did, so. And that's what I told Tom. There, there's some things here that we need to change and many of the things you're, you've mentioned are things that are on my radar, but it's good feedback.
Quick question for Tom or Chief Arado. What is the middle, this middle space here, it looks like it has benches in it that's not labeled?
Rodoff Men's Locker Room?
Yes, sir.
That, those are the actual lockers.
Oh, of course. Okay. In, in general, other than I'm sure there's some fine details here to work out, it looks reasonable. Off the break area at the back of the building, I realize you maybe haven't dealt with outside yet, but could there in fact be patio area out here? I thought from the diagram of where it sits on the land, it surely could do that.
Mayor, we were planning to have a exterior patio there, maybe covered to some extent and give the staff an opportunity to take advantage of that space when the weather's reasonable or maybe have a grill back there and start some fires.
Right, gotcha.
So I, I'll be Debbie Downer.
And what's new?
Yeah. I, I'm, I like the middle part, but the, it looks like we put all our money in the middle and then the sides, we just kind of, okay, that's the rest of it as far as the building.
Like the facade?
Well, yeah. I, I like the way that, you know, the previous renderings you gave us a long time ago as far as, as far as the look.
They have more of a slope to it than on page.
Well, I mean, this?
Once again, no page numbers. Here we go.
It has a title in the bottom left corner. Just referred to it by title.
You remember the last time I loved glass. I'm not like Ryland.
I'm, I'm trying to respect what I think the budget's going to allow.
You know, I, I think is, you know, you could do some architectural bump outs here and there.
And we may.
And once the landscaping hits it, kind of like this picture up in the top right-hand corner.
That I don't like.
You don't like that? What do you want?
Looks like we moved to Arizona.
Don't pay attention to the palm trees.
I like it.
Well, I mean, you could put wispy grass stuff, but you see how it's kind of bumped out in and out and there's some awnings over there?
There's some relief to it.
I like the relief.
Bear in mind, counsel.
The relief aspect.
It's work in progress. I want to hear things that you?
It's not finished product? You didn't come?
It's not finished. If you're just so offended, I want to hear that. And if you're jumping up and high-fiving me, I want to hear that.
I'll just say on aesthetics, this probably will be one of the last things I say about it because I don't want to get too mired, mired down in.
Can we record this?
Yeah. Because I might, I'm sure I'll say something else. But I, I like the general direction. The details may change, but I, I like the general direction. I, I, some residents may not be receptive. They may want a little more homey look, but I think we need to be cognizant of the surrounding topography, which includes Solana, which is, includes hotels. And, and, and above, and above all, I think that function is gonna dictate form because we have a budget we're desperately trying to adhere to. So I'm, I'm good with it.
Let's just kind of go around and give everybody a chance. Tom is looking for some general direction to help him make some decisions and so try to provide that. And Tom, are you wanting direction about stone at this point too or you want to wait?
Any comments you would have?
Any comments, okay.
Our goal tonight, I hope, is to get enough feedback that we can continue on to the point that we have enough information to put a package together and run our cost estimates for the project. And then to support you if you decide to move ahead with a November bond in terms of improving the graphics and all those picture things for the citizens.
Alright. Jim, let's just kind of go around, everybody make their comment and we'll go.
As, as Tom has heard this before during our subcommittee meetings, I really, really like, and I, I know a number of people have told me, they really like the aesthetics of the firehouse and the fact that it's a combination of different structural components, brick and stone and so on. And it just adds a little depth and character to the building as opposed to having this one flat wall, a wall the same color. And so, you know, my, my kind of thought would be maybe if there's some way to incorporate something along those lines to give some more depth and, and character to the outside of the building, that might be worth looking into.
Good, Jim. Garrett?
I, I'm impressed. I think, I, I like what you're doing. I think some touches here and there will, will make it look good. Don't have any other comments aside from the fact that I was looking at the agenda. I want to make sure if there's anybody that wants to make a comment, we make sure that?
That's the next agenda item. We're gonna move from the presentation to say, citizens, you got a question or comment? Come to us.
I'm, I think you're heading the right way.
Thank you.
Sorry for not paying attention.
Ryland?
Same. I think we're headed in a good direction and I'm ready to see more when it's ready.
Greg?
Well, I like the stone. Is it gonna be that color or just that was a?
Variety of colors and sometimes, you know, when you sketch it up on paper and then you copy it, it changes.
Along the fire station line.
I don't, you know, don't, don't be picking, picking on me based on colors tonight.
I thought you were gonna say, don't be picking out your curtains in a post tree.
We'll be hauling stone in here next, next December to show you, okay?
I, I've gotten used to the landscaping. I respect my councilman's shop's opinion. The other thing, I'm not crazy about the roof, I gotta tell you. It just doesn't look?
We're trying to keep it a little more residential with a sloped roof versus a flat roof.
Alright.
I don't, you know, I don't think we're gonna please everyone no matter what. I think it's a great job. I, I care about the function of the building. I care about the inside of the building that the police department and Stephen and his crew, I think it's functional and, and they can be there for the next twenty, thirty years. I think it looks great, fifty years, whatever it is. I know Nick and Philip will still be on the council then, so. But I, I, I think it's great, yeah. I don't, you know.
We'll leave you out, Greg? You're gone.
See who I support next time.
He's moving to Wesley. But I, I think, I think it's great. I just, I want to keep the cost down, so.
Yeah, and I, I like, I liked your original vision when you, you know, that's just me. I know the costs are high on that, but I like the different architectural features that you placed in it. Not just a flat boom, looks like a, you know, the elementary school that I went to. That's just me. That's just me. But I love the middle, I love the middle part, you know, but you all, you know, the last time, I loved glass.
It was the option four from last time. I can, I can send that to you.
I've got it.
So I got a?
But I mean, just the, you know, on that one, there were different architectural features that made it. And like Garrett said, just a few things here and there.
And there's a few things that we may be able, even on the PD side, to kind of give it some articulation. But there are some security things that we want to ensure on the PD side that aren't necessarily the same on the town hall side. And so that may give us some flexibility to work with the building on either side to make it look a, some unique character.
So a couple of comments?
And it's in the middle of trees. So it's gonna, I mean, it's, it's not gonna look like this.
There are trees behind it, I'm not?
They're all around, like you said.
The time we plant those eighty trees in front of the building, you're not gonna see it in ten years.
You're a hundred and twenty trees that you're gonna demand.
I'm not retaining all elevations.
Tree mitigation.
Oh, yes, you are.
No, Garrett, we're not paying tree mitigation, are we, Garrett?
He's gonna be on a lonely island on that one.
Actually, actually, we have former council member Rose here who would appreciate, because that would be Tree City for like ten years.
There we go.
Okay, so a couple of comments I got. Number one, I like the pitched roof. I really don't want a flat roof. I think that hurts us, number one. Number two, I do think I would rather have some kind of relief aspect down those long walls and especially the wall that is against Trophy Wood Drive. The tendency would be all of a sudden that's flat and I think you really lost a lot of opportunity there. I like the fact that you told me, I think, twenty feet or whatever that elevation was in the center. And I like the fact that I think you were saying twelve feet or something, which gave ten-foot ceilings by the time you had some space there. I like some of that. I, I will say, one thing that I learned from the tour of Watauga is they had an elected official office off the lobby. They don't use it for that anymore. And when you ask the town manager about it, it was because it was so public and anything that any elected official was gonna have a meeting with someone ended up involving staff. And so that elected official office went back to somewhere in the town offices, although it was left up front, because I think it was already there, number one. And it became a place that two or three citizens could have met with a staff person and they didn't take the citizens back to the back. And so they're left this place to meet up front. And, and I thought that was a good observation. I'm not quite sure how you fit that, but that was surely an observation that they made that sucked home for me about that. I, I think you've done a good job getting this started. I like it. I like, and we'll get this way when we get into more detail. I like some of the aspects you did at the northeast Tarrant Courthouse that I paid more attention to this week when I was there at a reception. So, you know, I'm going, Art, if you're gonna, if you're gonna break off with a walled council chambers, how do you provide any kind of area that could provide a serving area if somebody had something in that room? Same way with the training room. None of those rooms seem to have anything that says, I'm gonna break off a little counter space, place for coffee, drinks, whatever that might be.
Yeah, and Mayor, that's great comments and I, I think we're thinking that way. We just?
It's just not in this drawing at this point.
Just haven't shown it yet.
But I think you hit the critical point and we needed more, more chairs unless, in the council room, unless you had tables up front and the staff faced the council. And I remember at Watauga, that was the case. Now, I don't know how many people went around there, semicircle, but?
Probably a dozen.
But the disadvantage of what you've drawn there is a complete half of a circle. And so the, the angles get pretty tough with that a little bit. So I don't know, maybe that's fine. I'm just thinking, that's exactly what you have here, so maybe that's perfectly fine, I guess. Yeah. Okay.
One other comment if I may?
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, just, just for the benefit of people sitting out in the audience, when you're designing this and, and of course, I don't know how the walls are gonna work out, but, but please see if you can do something with the display monitors for the audience especially, because it's very difficult unless you're sitting in that front row to see what's on those screens. Because if you sit further back, they vanish. And so if there's some way to have the screens facing out in this grand? And so if there's some way to have the screens facing out in this grandiose design, which is great, uh, that'd be terrific.
We agree, Jim.
And, and that might very well be that there are monitors behind, uh, so that you're always facing.
We have a, an AV consultant that we use, Chris Jordan, in fact, I was talking to him at Rotary a couple of weeks ago, and something we'll talk to Stephen about, there's a new, uh, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that.
All right, so, um, Tom, I, I think my interpretation of council is supportive of what you've done. Uh, looks like that we move ahead to the next step, I think Stephen, I don't believe Stephen had a chance, Stephen Seidel had a chance to offer input when he met with the staff because of his schedule, uh, so there's probably some things to do that. And in general, would you say we're two weeks or four weeks away from our next meeting? Nick got really wide-eyed back there when I said that. He maybe was thinking one week, was that what you were thinking, Nick, one week? Oh, okay, good.
Can we get back to you on that?
Sure you can, okay.
No more than four, maybe in two, and, uh, you know, we know the deadline's the end of July, trying to get these numbers together so you can make some decisions.
I understand, I, I mean, I'm just doing general planning, it doesn't mean we can't have a special council meeting or something to deal with that, but I'm just looking ahead.
Mayor, I'm very encouraged by all your comments, this is special, uh, very good.
All right, anybody else, council?
They're all special meetings, Nick.
All right, uh, Tom, thank you if you would still stay for our citizen portion of that.
I'm going to get out of the way.
Item four, receive public input regarding the police and town hall facility, discussion of same. Citizens, I'm not going to make you fill out a card, and you may have done it already, uh, Ri- Richard did fill out a card, so I'll go to Richard first, and then anybody else, if you want to come up, identify yourself, ask a question, we'll try to get your answer. Offer your comments, positive or negative about things, so that we take that input, please, that's the purpose of having this. Richard Sinelli, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, others, full disclosure, I'm a recovering architect.
We won't hold that against you.
And secondly, I am a member of the planning commission, and I do not speak for the commission tonight, this is just me as a citizen who happens to be a member of the planning commission. I'm Richard Sinelli, I live at thirty-five Meadowbrook Lane, been there for ten years now, almost eleven, and, uh, I've been watching this project evolve with great interest, uh, Trophy Club needs a town hall, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see the direction you're heading, it's a wonderful piece of property. I thank you for the opportunity to just mention a couple of things that I see on these drawings that are suggestions, uh, before it comes to the planning commission. Item one, site plan, um, I note that, uh, a, a significant portion of the site plan is available for future development, I think is where you put it, and I would suggest that considering the access egress constraints for this property, that a TW King access be drawn in, that provides the town with the best opportunity to take advantage of that property's development in the future, but be included in these plans. In other words, that this not just be a site plan, but be a master plan for the whole property. Uh, in that same vein, I think that the access to the town hall, uh, maybe is understated, uh, and specifically, uh, from, uh, what's called Plaza Drive, and maybe we should rename it Trophy Plaza Drive or something of that nature, but Plaza Drive next to the hotel, uh, it seems to me that that's a central entrance point. It's not coming off the side road on a steep hill off of Trophy Wood Drive, it's coming from a flat area. It's coming from the rest, you might say, the community that we interface with, the hotels, the Solana, the South Lake and all the rest, and maybe it, it ought to be a more significant entry, perhaps even, even a, uh, even a divided, uh, access, uh, mini parkway, if you will, uh, to designate it as your main access point, coming straight to the building from, from the south. Uh, in, in that same vein then on access and egress and circulation, it seems to me that specifically now for police access, that it's a little bit convoluted. For one thing, a TW King access would be a little bit more, a little bit of help to that, perhaps, but I see that there's a, a, the, the Fire Lane driveway that goes past the proposed secured entry for the, uh, uh, public safety side, the driveway seems to come to an abrupt halt around the back of the building, and it seems to me that there should be a, a plan for the development of that space immediately behind the building, and I'm not saying all the way up that hill because we know it's steep and got some trees on it, but something for, uh, use by, uh, by anyone who's here at the building, uh, at the new town hall, uh, even for events that may happen that you want to take outdoors. Uh, so that's, that's another point, and then finally, uh, uh, on the building, not much to say there because again, I'm a recovering architect, but along the lines of what I, I heard from one of our council members, the center of this building, i- i- it's got some pretty interesting and perhaps even flamboyant things going on. Clear story windows, a higher ceiling, maybe even an open ceiling, it's not flat, some pretty exciting things. And it would be nice to see a little bit more of that happening in the rest of the building, uh, because right now it looks like we have, uh, I won't say an old-fashioned arrangement of offices, but kind of harkening back to another time, um, not saying the nineteen fifties, but harkening back to a time when cubicles were all the rage. And there, uh, I'm not suggesting that we go the way of Google or Apple and have everything in open office arrangement, but flexibility with more open office planning would be, uh, would be greatly enhanced, rather than the cubicle approach. Last thing is, uh, I don't see a lot of exits from this building, uh, that's a lot of square footage, uh, almost eight thousand square feet in the blue area, and, uh, no way out except, uh, uh, the back door from the break room and through that one little door to the public lobby, lobby. And I do think the suggestion of placing a reception area, whether it's staffed all the time or it's got information there, whatever it is, that would really be a help, you want to come in and, and feel like you've arrived somewhere and not be standing there looking around saying, where am I? Uh, and in that same vein, if you're going to go for a permit, it used to be you'd go up to a window and talk to somebody. I promise you, that's not the way it happens anymore in most municipalities, it's usually online, it's usually with computer stations that are right there. So if we're going to do more online permitting and interface, uh, with our, with the public, we might want to rethink how we're interfacing along that line of, of counters and windows. Thanks, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Richard, appreciate that. Anybody else? Ms. Ford?
Can I ask Richard a question?
You want to ask Richard a question?
Kind of a clarification point.
Uh, yeah, Pearl, wait a second, let.
Is that okay?
Richard, he has a question for you.
Can you, so we've gone back and forth on this cubicle office, walls, not walls.
Yes.
Can you explain the difference between what you, you talked about an open concept?
Yes.
Versus a cubicle concept?
Yes.
Can you just kind of, what, what's the difference between that and what do you see, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say this is old-fashioned, but I do want to understand what you're talking about.
I think that there.
Because I think I've been trying to grab at something I think the rest of us have, giving more flexibility to the floor plan, but what did you mean by that?
There are extremes in approaches to office planning, one being, uh, individual offices, floor-to-ceiling doors, all the key people on the outside get windows, all the real worker bees are in the middle with something else. On the other hand, if you go to, uh, the new Apple headquarters or Google's new, new headquarters, you'll notice that besides people on roller skates, there are a number of opportunities to, to address the issues of when private is, privacy is needed and when it's not, when an office can be shared for privacy, and when you can have areas for work which involve a workstation as you have right now in front of you with your Apple laptop. And you don't need an office for everything and for all that you're doing. How you work that out, I think, has a lot to do with how you envision the future of work being done. And I think your, your, your town manager probably has more experience in this than, than most of us. Uh, as an architect, I've had a lot of experience in doing both kinds of office arrangements. And I can tell you that every time I've done one that my clients insist on having a lot of private offices, they always come back later and say, um, how can we make this more flexible? Flexibility is your key for the future because the work that you're going to be doing in this town hall will alter dramatically with the evolution of the town and with the evolution of how work is done. And electronics has a lot to do with it, I don't know if that answers your question.
Now, that, that does, and I think that as, as we look at this, and I know that Stephen, you're dealing with that, and it's hard to, to say what's going to happen in fifty years, but if we are building a building that's going to be here for fifty years, you know, maybe we need to make sure we're having those conversations about where's technology going, how are we going to use space, are there more employees, less employees, and just address that so that we don't get.
If I may make one final comment about, let's call it aesthetics, someone mentioned that they felt like they were moving to Tucson, the Arizona look, here's the deal, most of the roofscapes in Trophy Club and in most of the communities around us are not gable roofs, they're hip roofs, and a gable end on these two wings, let's call the wings, the gable ends are going to be, uh, um, how shall we say, they may not fit everybody's idea of Trophy Club, and gabling those ends might be one way to handle the aesthetics of how the building finishes on the ends of the wings.
Include gables or not gables?
I would, I would suggest you look at the possibility of using gable ends rather than, I mean, uh, hip ends rather than gables.
Hip ends, that's what I thought you were going.
Thank you.
I didn't want the gable.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay.
And hip roofs, uh, if you look around, uh, most of our town halls around us, go to Keller, go to any of them, they all have hip roofs.
Yeah.
I'm not, and I'm sorry if I'm stepping on any architectural toes with that.
All right.
Pardon me. Thanks, Richard.
All right, so, uh, Pearl, please come forward.
First, I, my name is Pearl, I can't talk, my name is Pearl Ford and I live at Two Spring Creek Court. First, I would like to thank the council for making the decision that we're going to buy the land and we're going to go for, go forward. I, I really appreciate that. Now, no disrespect to the architect, but most people know I'm, I don't beat around the bush, okay? The outside of the building, uh, how to put this, looks to me like.
Horse, horse gables.
It looks to me like a factory.
Like what?
A factory.
Factory, yes.
Uh, I know we're going to go to the, go and try to get a barn issue, and I think we're trying to keep it cost-effective, I understand that, but function is great, and I'm a functional person, but aesthetics sometimes sell more than function when you want somebody to vote for something. Okay, uh, and you don't have to put angels like on Bass Hall, but on that end that faces Trophy Wood, and I think we all talked about that, that's the end that most of the constituencies, your constituency would see as they come down Trophy Wood. And they look at that and you'll see a blank wall, and so if something can be done about that, I would suggest we would look at that. The other thing on the elevation coming in, if I, and I need, I have a question or clarification for this. On the elevation coming in, I, as I look at the map, if I understood it correctly, you have to go up some stairs or up something to get to the main floor, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And maybe I didn't see it, but for old folk like me, we need some ramp or something else to help us go up and handicap people, really, you know.
We're going to have a ramp for me as well.
Well, I, I didn't see the ramp in the, in the thing, and maybe I missed it.
Well, it's just hard to read, it's here.
Okay.
All right, but yes, we will.
Okay, well, that's one thing. The other thing is in the parking, I see that there are a lot of space, um, in the future, in that right-hand side on the parking, but in front of the building, it's almost like here, as we are now, and when we have meetings, there's always a battle for the spaces in the front, and do you, are you following me? No, if you look at, yeah, that's the one, if you look at the parking in front of the building, if I understand, on the far right is the parking that's open to the public, and the parking square up on the top is closed to security, is that correct, sir?
I think the intent is th- this lot right here in front of the building is primarily for the public, that's for you.
Well, what I'm saying, I don't know whether that's adequate or not because of the spa, I'm just raising a question, because now how far distance is from that parking to the extended parking?
Well, from, uh, the front door, probably over here, we are probably a couple hundred feet.
And how big, how big is a football field?
Three hundred feet.
Okay, so you, you're almost two-thirds of a football field away, okay?
From this part, you probably are, down here in the corner.
Okay, I just, I just pointed out as a.
So we've got nineteen, twenty-three, thirty-five, forty-seven spaces in the front of the building, including four handicap spots.
Okay, I, I don't know how you can solve that, but I'm just pointing out that when we have large meetings, uh, you know, you'll have two-thirds of people, and maybe, just, I'm just making a, a comment, I don't, I don't have solutions, okay?
Well, if you don't have any solution, how am I going to get my work done? I'm looking for help.
You're looking for help? I can't say what I want to say. Okay, but in a way, that's, that, that you need to look at, and the third thing is the roof. I don't care about the roof being, you know, pointed, but the, is it a kind of, is it a tin roof, a metal roof, right?
We're proposing a metal roof, yes.
Is it going to be coated with anything?
Yes.
Because those of us who've been here a while know that metal roofs and neighbor, you're going to have neighbors coming, you didn't tell me this stuff is going to reflect on my, your neighbor.
Yeah, we're not going to do like the museum downtown Dallas.
Okay, well, there were some metal roofs done in Trophy Club that caused problems also. And, uh, think about, I'm on this page with the community room, I agree that when you walk into the lobby, you need something, someone or something to give you the directions. And as it is now, I would walk in not knowing where I'm going, and I would go into the police lobby and get arrested. If nobody's there.
That's right, happens every time.
So.
You can stop at the, at the elected official room?
You can bark at him, yeah.
Well, anyway, I'm, I'm supporting having someone in the area.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
For the direction. As far as the cubicle versus, and I was going to talk about that also, based on my own experiences in, not only in the company that I worked for, but in other companies on the west coast which I consulted to, the flexibility of the office space and how you do it without having permanent walls will save you a lot of money in the long run. The key people should have, um, permanent walls, but workspaces that could be shared, or if you had space in between the walls that, that can be expanded or shrunk. For example, I'm looking at this picture, okay? And if you look at, let's say, I'm taking an example, can you, oh, you can bring it up for me? All right, uh, if you look at, I'm just making this as examples, let's say we want, we don't have a strategic services coordinator, I'm not firing anybody tonight, okay, the strategic, strategic services coordinator or financial analyst, but, and you decided you're going to add another person, if this wall is permanent between the control of the financial analyst and the str- strategic service coordinator, you don't have any flexibility if you decided that you don't want to have that. Maybe you want to hire somebody and give them the bigger space, so I don't know what you'd do about that, but all, all these walls permanent? All I'm suggesting is that.
We need to figure that out.
You need to figure out that some space in some place should have walls that can be adjusted. You don't have to put them all through the. You don't have to put them all through the bill. This is my suggestion for workspace. And that will allow you some flexibility, and you still could have your permanent office for the big muck to muck, okay? I'm sorry, I shouldn't use muck to muck. For the management team.
Regular muck.
For the management team, okay? And as far as the council room, when you draw this across, and I think somebody raised this question before, but maybe I didn't hear the answer. From time to time, we have in this room two layers or three layers of people at joint meetings with the planning and zoning commission, plus the bond experts behind them, plus whatever. And to me, and that became such crowded area. And to me, it looks like we're reproducing that same problem. You don't understand the problem?
I, I, I hear you.
Can, can y'all help me explain that to you? You know, we have the planning, zoning joint meeting, then you have experts behind them. And sometimes we have two levels of tables, and it, it was all crowded.
I think if you look at that, Pearl, there is probably six feet from the end of the dais circle to the first set of chairs, maybe.
Actually, we're planning eight feet.
Okay. Very good estimate for.
From the step to the first chair.
You've got some room to put a table if those chairs move forward.
And bear in mind, the chairs aren't permanent.
To duplicate this.
We're planning to have two steps.
But I was planning to duplicate this area. To me, this area is waste. That's just my opinion. Like Councilman Schaffner said, you know, I have these odd opinions, okay? So that's just my opinion. That, that area is waste.
It is an interesting point, is that we picked up some space by recessing that, which put the podium in a little closer. And you kind of got past the end of where some staff is. And you brought, you, you picked up a little space, didn't you, Pearl?
I did.
Tom, would it be advantageous if this center area in front of the dais was at the same level as the rest of the floor?
Hi, it might.
Yeah, that's right.
And then you'd have that extra flexibility without that step?
It might, yes.
Interesting, I did, Jim, yeah.
It gives you the opportunity to move this up, have tables behind you without competing on those chairs.
All right, Pearl, go ahead.
I've said enough for tonight.
Thank you, Pearl. I do have a couple of questions that have kind of come up since then, and then I'll give everybody else a chance to. Were there any other citizens wanting to talk, say anything? No? Bernard, were you wanting to? You just were moving your hand, okay. So one of the things that I question, and you don't have to have an answer tonight, uh, is the secured parking area of forty-seven spaces. I would just say, I realize you want a secured parking area, but I hate the fact that I could, I'm giving up maybe ten spaces that I would rather have when I need the overflow. That's just me.
What was difficult there, Mayor, was as we looked at this, and if you follow my cursor there, and, and pulling around the circulation inside this lot.
Yep.
And then we had a couple of spaces here we wanted to provide it, so if the police car wanted to park here and bring in a person of question, right into this side door, into, into this holding area and processing area, they could do that. We had extra, we just had space here, so we decided, let's put some parking there, and let's give them staff, select staff, the ability to park back there. If we pull this fence north, you end up at the dead end here. I just don't think it works well. So it's kind of by default, you get to a, a, a certain minimum size of that lot, and it, to go any smaller just doesn't work.
That's fine. So the other thing I would then say is that, uh, where you have the parking on the bottom right, I don't know that it's needed or not, but it seems like to me if we're building a parking lot, we're better off to go ahead and extend that a little further towards the water tower while we're doing parking lot. That's just me. You always seem to underpark it sometimes. Uh, I realize it's a further walk, but when you're crowded.
One, one thing, why we've kind of left that open is that at a future date, we could create a, a yard and/or a shop building there. And so we're trying to, wh- when we, when, when we've kind of looked at this, it's what, what is functional for today? Then long-term, how can this parking be functional down the road so that we can have, you know, uh, a place for materials, bulk storage? Um, if we wanted to construct a shop or something there on site, we, you know, we could always pave it, but I.
Gotcha, okay. Well, just a suggestion that we, we look at parking seriously, and I don't know if there's a way, because you've, you've got this angled parking at the front of the building with a bunch of wasted space for that fifteen-foot setback.
Well, it, it's, it's.
But I, but I understand the problem there.
Yeah, we're trying to follow the contours a little bit, and we, we've got to put eighty trees someplace, so I mean, it, it's not.
Oh, gotcha.
We got to have some green space.
One thing I will say.
That bollards.
That's a sensitive subject. One thing I will say in support of what the mayor just said about parking is if, if we go with this site plan or something very similar, if you ever were to add any parking, it's probably going to be where you said. And there's other, there's other spaces where you might be able to do some of the uses that Stephen suggested, so. Maybe if we carry through the potential scenarios, maybe there's something there that we could do.
You're also, I mean, how many parking spaces do we have out there?
Yeah, this is a lot more.
Triple it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Compared to what we have.
Good point.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is I do support the idea, whoever said it, maybe it was Richard, that said, if you're going to do this, you go ahead and build a drive back to T W King.
And we, and there's an access point out there.
There is an access point. We're going to have to do, work with Southlake to do some issues there, but if we're going to build it, now's the time to do it, in my opinion. Not, not later. All right.
Driveway, yeah.
Um, I think one of the things that, uh, may happen, I know that staff gave you some input that's not on this drawing. You've heard some input tonight, and I know Stephen maybe hasn't had much time to, to deal with it either. My suggestion is that you take Stephen's input, you take our input, and it would be nice to, uh, at least reproduce a few of these pages in the sense of the, at least the, uh, plan of offices, if you're going to do that. And, and it come back to us, just email them the file and let them print it, and they can get it to council to look at. As opposed to, we really didn't have time to look at this tonight. So it's, even though we got an email copy that I could print on my legal-sized paper, I still couldn't read it, but.
Well, and it came late.
And it came late, I understand. So I think it's good that, that we make some of those changes, incorporate them, get it to us. You'll be working on other things while that happens. At least that's my opinion, so. All right, anybody else? We really appreciate you coming tonight. I think we made a lot of progress, uh, towards what we needed to do, and I, we appreciate the fact that you're recognizing our timeline. We don't have to have final architectural by mid-August, but we surely need the estimate by mid-August. If we're going to know what's the dollar amount that we're going to work with for a bond election, so.
I thi- I think once we get through the next meeting, we're going to be close enough that we can turn loose our consultants to look at those costs while we still tweak.
Other things.
The images and any other concerns you might have on the plan. You know, twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet is twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet now based in the, of this use. Where a wall is, is not that important. We, we will discuss the wall system. And there is an option out there in the, in the world called DIRT, D-I-R-T, wall system. So Google that when you have time and look at it, um, that we might want to consider.
I am not in favor of cubicles.
Well, this isn't a cubicle. This is a wall system for offices.
Okay. And, and the reason I say that is two reasons. One, I've had lots of experience with all types. And two, um, in some cases, there's confidential data that shouldn't be on a desk. Now, you could say everybody puts up, picks up their work and stores it at the end of the day, but that didn't happen.
I, I, this is a very unique building in that when you look at the, the inner core of these two spaces, both town hall and P D, they're very specialized and fixed spaces. There are toilet rooms, there are server rooms, they are, uh, I T areas, they are evidence rooms, uh, gun lockers, uh, men's and women's P D areas. So those inner cores, will they change? I can't say they won't, but they are not a flexible space by nature. And what we have left then is a, is a certain degree of offices around the perimeter, which are, uh, and I understand the comment with Google and Apple, some great spaces, but you're talking thousands of people with, uh, a certain pecking order, and there's a lot of people doing work that can be flexible. And as you just started, Mayor, there's a lot of confidential material for most of these private offices. And I think we've taken the approach where we could have some open space. Uh, we've tried to do that. But Stephen, if you're, will we look that and make sure we're online?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean cubicle. I meant like flexible.
Walls.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Both of y'all coming and taking the notes. Appreciate you, you're waiting tonight for our process.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, council, I'm going to move on to item five. I don't think it will take too long, and Mark has been here a long time, and we appreciate that. And, uh, after we do that, we'll take a short recess. Item five, consider and take appropriate action regarding authorizing town staff and Mark McLeaney with SAMCO Capital Markets, the town's financial advisor, to pursue a bond refunding for interest rate savings and to manage future bond capacity and other matters related thereto. Stephen, did you want to introduce or?
Yes, I'll, I'll give you some brief comments. Uh, Mark McLeaney, who is our financial advisor from SAMCO Capital Markets, is here this evening. Uh, we talked to you about a month or so ago about refunding these, these bonds. And, um, one of the reasons was to save interest, and another reason is to, um, secure some debt capacity for future years. One of the things that Mark's going to share with you this evening is that the market has changed just in the last few weeks. And, um, some of the interest rates that we thought we might be able to get, um, they're starting to creep up, which is not as good a news, but I'm going to let him kind of cover that, but just as a precursor to the presentation, just have that in the back of your minds. Mark?
Thank you. It's good being here again. In your agenda packets, there's a letter that staff put out as well as a, a one-page summary of what we're going to talk about today. We started this process several months ago, just visiting about the possibility of refunding. At that time, we were looking at interest rates ranging from about one seventy-five to two percent. We weren't ready to proceed because of the second part that Stephen said is the bond capacity. We don't know what our target is going to need to be next fiscal year until we get our taxable values. We just now are getting our preliminary values. They are going to continue to be refreshed. We're now to the point that we could proceed because we know what our target is. And again, what we have as a goal on interest rate is to maintain your eleven cent I N S tax rate. You're structured in a great position that next year you drop dramatically so that if and when the voters approve a new bond project, we can do it without changing the current tax rate. That, the current I N S portion of the tax rate. That won't have a, you won't have a bond payment for that until 2017, so we have to look at where we're going to be in 2016. You've got great growth. So we want to push debt service into this upcoming year at the expense of latter years, and that gives you cost savings. Where we were, again, we were one and a quarter to two, one and three-quarters to two percent. Now I think we're in the two and three-quarters to three percent. That's how much interest rates have moved in the past Jan-, since January and February. I think we're still positive savings. The numbers that I ran still have a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings after all costs. It's worth pursuing, but it's not worth pursuing. I wouldn't come here and say, we need to do this refunding if the sole goal was savings. Because it's not enough compared to the total principal that you're refunding. But we have a second goal that I think is more important, that's if we get savings, can we maintain our I N S tax rate and still have a good drop-off the following year in 2017? Otherwise, if you don't, you're going to get about three hundred thousand dollar drop in your taxable value, I mean, in your I N S tax revenue, which means your I N S tax rate has to go up before going back up next year after a successful bond election. That's what it, the, the fluctuation is what I don't want to happen to you all. What we're proposing is to go out to market, bid these bonds, come in with interest rates on your July fourteenth meeting. If the rates are gen- are sufficient to give us positive savings and we can manage the tax rate, we'll ask the council to proceed. If it's cost us money, if it's going to cost us more interest in the long run, even at the cost of messing with our tax rate, then we're going to have to look at different directions or different solutions. We've talked internally, what is another solution? And you've done this in the past, two or three years ago, you did some tax notes. Did some tax notes for some important equipment that needed to get purchased. You funded it over three or four years. That is an alternative to, to give you what you need in, on a product. And it could help fund a project, um, fund the city hall project, whatever it may be, and maintaining that eleven cent I N S tax rate so it doesn't drop for one year, have a successful bond election, and then pushes it back up the following year. That's what we don't want to see. So what our recommendation, in light of what's going on with the interest rate market, is we're going to receive bids. We would receive them on the ninth of Thursday, July ninth. We'd bring it to your all's council. If the savings are sufficient, if it's worth pursuing, you all will make that business decision. If it doesn't, if for some reason we get three and a quarter percent interest rates, because interest rates keep going higher, table it, would not take any action, and there wouldn't be any costs associated with it. So I thought that was a good alternative, knowing what your goals are. Um, and then we have a fallback position if interest rates go higher and we can't generate savings out of this refunding also. That, that's very quick. I know this memo was in your, your packet. Again, even from this memo, which we did earlier last week, or late last week, I'd change it to two, two and three-quarters to three percent because interest rates went higher again today. The ten-year treasury bond is approximately two point four four percent. In January, it was sub-two percent. So you can see the, the huge difference in rates. And that's everything I had. Just, we were looking for direction to proceed under that idea that we would get interest rates, we would present them to you, you all would make the decision whether to proceed on July fourteenth.
Thank you. Chair will recognize Mayor Protem Lamont for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff and Mark McLeaney with SAMCO Capital Markets to pursue a bond refunding for interest rate savings and to manage future bond capacity and other matters related thereto.
I'll take it.
Do you want to be specific to the two thousand seven G O bonds, or are you leaving it open?
That's the only bonds that are really callable, so that'd be, by definite, or by default, we're going to get that one.
That's fine, okay. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont and a second by Roe. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Mark, thank you very much for coming. I know you come up from San Antonio to.
No, wait, I've got meetings today. I had meetings today, I have them tomorrow too, so thank you.
Okay, so you're in town. Thank you very much, uh, for coming. We appreciate that.
Appreciate it. I'll get with, with staff and get this thing rolling. We will know by Thursday, the ninth, prior to the council meeting, um, where things are. Uh, of course, no decisions will be made. It would be authorized, subject to council approval, uh, on the fourteenth.
And as a side note, one of the things that we were, you know, Stephen and I were even brainstorming today, one of the things that we'll come up with between now and then is some solutions, if, you know, to present at that time, like, here are some ideas of what you could do depending upon what happens, so.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, council, it is nine thirty-one. We will take a ten-minute recess. Counsel, it is 9:31. We will take a 10-minute recess.
Yeah, lots of pictures.
You have prepared the question for him, haven't you? You know, I asked you to have a question for him at the end of this. Well, we still are waiting for.
Who's missing?
Stephen.
Two Stephens. Oh, that's David.
No, we got one Stephen.
Oh, one Stephen.
All right.
He's walking up. I'll introduce our.
Miguel, are we recording?
Yes.
All right. It is 20 minutes till 10, and we are back in regular session. Go Stephen, please. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't read the item.
Right.
Received presentation regarding general fund revenues, discussion of same. Thank you, Stephen.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Before I start, I'm gonna introduce our new controller who's here tonight, Amber Karkauskas. She started last week. She's been a big help to me already, taking some of the past duties that I had and kinda running with that, so we're very excited to have her. So tonight's conversation will be about general fund revenue, and this will probably be one of the easier conversations that you have throughout your budget process. So what I wanted to show you is a, basically, a lot of graphical representations and trend information that has occurred over the past few years dating back to fiscal year 2010. And some of these items, we extend to our planning years out to, excuse me, out to 2020. You can see our tax rate history. 2010 down at 47 cents, kind of increased the next few years. And then you've seen a steady decrease since 2012. This slide shows you our property tax revenue over that, over that same period and also extended throughout our planning years. You can see kind of the explosive growth throughout 2010 through, you know, basically this year. It kinda tapers off going, going through the planning years. What we're proposing is, you know, as we spoke before, a 48.4 cent tax rate, which is a decrease of a little over half of a cent from, from the previous year. And this is detail of what we're estimating to end fiscal year 2015 at and what that 48.4 cent tax rate will produce for the general fund next year. So overall, it's about, you know, in total, a over 400, almost a $500,000 increase. About 330 to 350,000 of that comes from new properties. This is a sales tax revenue by year, again, starting at 2010 and extending out through our planning period of 2020. You can see kind of the effects of the recession there at the beginning. The town has grown since then, and you can see in 2017, we project something to happen over, over at Trophy Wood. That's why you kinda see a fairly large increase in 2017. And this is the detail, again, of the sales tax. Sales tax has two components, the general 1% sales tax and then mixed beverage tax, which is hovering about 20,000 per year right now. We're projecting almost 780,000 in total sales tax for FY '16. And another point I wanna make is that these numbers are all fluid. We're gonna get three more sales tax deposits between now and when you adopt your budget, so we basically plug those into our model. So these are gonna fluctuate a little bit. Same thing with the property tax. It's gonna be based on the certified value rather than what we're estimating that value's gonna be at the, or at, at July 25th.
Stephen, you may wanna mention, because they may not know, about mixed beverage tax in the state, about their portion of it.
Right. We don't get a lot. The mixed beverage taxes, it, it ends up being about 14%. We get one of those percents and the state gets 13. So, you know, there's, there's various things like that, that, you know, we don't, we basically don't get a lot of revenue from.
Not gonna balance our budget by doing more drinking, is that what you're saying?
Well, you're, you'll balance the state's budget. Also, if you choose defensive driving, you'll help balance their budget too, because they get about 100 and some odd dollars from that and we get nine, so, yeah. So franchise fees, and this is something that the council took action on, I believe, two meetings ago, which was to reduce the tax rate and increase some of our franchise fees related to gas and solid waste. So as you can see, the, the top portion of the 2016 proposed, that, that light blue increases quite a bit. In fact, it just about doubles, and that's because you're gonna double your solid waste franchise. And then you can see the red one, the gas one, also increases pretty significantly. We're basically increasing that one about 20%, and that's to, you know, that basically eliminates the property tax rate decline. And here is detail of the franchise fees. The electric franchise fee is our biggest. That's basically the increase, and that one's gonna be just basically new properties. The gas, as I said previously, is based on the action to increase that franchise from 4%, to 5%. Telecommunications is kind of a funny one. Not many people, you know, that one's actually declining for almost all cities because people use less and less landlines. Cable is increasing though, as cable prices increase and then you get new residents. And then the solid waste refuse, that one's going up fairly significantly because we are increasing that franchise from 6% to 12%. So total, yes?
The franchise tax, different franchise tax, but retail businesses pay. Does the town not get any of that?
No.
Gets nothing.
No, you're talking about, are you talking about if you open a franchise business?
No, regular, any business, we pay franchise.
Corporate tax, franchise tax.
Goes to the state, but nothing goes back to the town.
No, these are right-of-way fees, so basically that, that area in front of, you know, a business or a home that.
No, I understand what this is, but we all, as business owners, we pay franchise tax.
Right. We get, we get none of that.
We get none of that.
Correct.
And let me ask you this, on the cable, is that just, who do, who do we have?
Charter.
It's AT&amp;T, U-verse and Charter. It's primarily AT&amp;T, U-verse.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if it was just Charter.
Charter is, you know, you know, AT&amp;T, U-verse is more and more popular. Charter's kind of, you know, staying steady at about.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't know if it was just Charter.
It's probably, Charter is totally about maybe 20% of the total of, of that amount.
So where does all the DirecTV and Dish, do they have?
There's no lines.
There's, they don't use our right-of-way.
Nothing, but even if they don't have like Texas or whatever.
You can't get your claws in me, Lamont. I'm a satellite user.
He has a satellite.
I got it too. There's a tax on there.
But there's no lines.
I like AT&amp;T, U-verse. I'm not trying to sway you to, to, you know.
I like DirecTV. And, and you won't.
He gets New York channel, so.
Okay, licenses and permits. As you can see, this one is, is kind of the one that we are, you know, kind of guarding against because it is, these are really one-time fees, you know, not ongoing fees like sales tax, franchise fees, property tax. You know, once, you know, once somebody builds a home, gets a permit, we're not getting another permit from them unless they do some type of remodel or something like that. This peaked at over $1 million in 2012. We've seen a steady decline since then, and we see this kind of tapering off to a base amount of just under 200,000. And that's gonna be, you know, I think this year, and I'll go to the next slide. You know, we're up, we're up over 700,000. Next year, we're showing about $165,000 decrease. And so, so from that, so from that next year proposed, we're gonna see, over the course of the next couple of years, of almost $400,000 decrease in those licenses, licenses and permits overall. So that revenue's not coming back, unfortunately.
Those last two for '19 and '20, what are, what are those gonna be based on since all the build-outs finished? And you think we'll have a steady supply of remodels and stuff?
Well, there's still, there's still remodels, there's pool permits, there's fence permits, sprinkler permits, all those kind of miscellaneous, miscellaneous permits that, that we kind of have ongoing. Now, those do decrease when you have, you know, less new growth too, but, but, you know, you have, you know, we still get those, so.
And in addition, you're always going to have remodeling permits, especially as our area continues to be a desirable location. People may buy an older home, they wanna remodel it. Depending on the extent of the remodel, they do have to pull a permit, especially if they start wanting to move walls, electrical, plumbing. But also, you're always gonna have some commercial permits, especially like in the Tom Thumb Shopping Center. They have to come in and do a, a permit there to, to do any type of tenant improvement. And this also doesn't take into account if anything would ever happen along PD 30. You would also have some significant spikes there with some developer fees as well as building permits. But for conservative planning sake, we're just saying, it, it's gonna drop. And we're, we're always gonna have some revenue coming in, but it won't, it won't be to the extent that we've had the last six, seven years.
It seemed like a lot of 200,000.
Those miscellaneous permits have been, you know, I kind of have shown a 5% decrease in those just because we'll, we'll be built out with, with a lot of new homes and probably won't be issuing a lot of those permits. But we do have, you know, an older area of, of town that, that you will still see, you know, some remodels and, and those various miscellaneous permits. Intergovernmental revenue, this is basically a few components. One is that ILA with 4B, basically $55,000. We have another transfer from 4B, which is $35,000, which is for administrative services provided by town staff related to 4B. And some of those spikes you see there in 2011 through 2014 are related to the former CMO contract ILA with the mud. So that's gone, so we have no more revenue coming in from that. We did have, I believe, 26,000 this year, and we do not project anything related to that in future years. Charges for service. The largest components of these are NISD contribution, which is to fund our two SROs, and EMS fees. The decrease is related to developers' fees. We got about $135,000 this year related to developers' fees. We're projecting, I believe, 5,000 going forward, and that's fairly conservative, but, you know, those, those are kind of one-off fees that, that, you know, we're not gonna, we're not really gonna project. If we get them, great. Fines and fees. This is a lot of our recreation fees. This is municipal court. And actually, I'm sorry, this one is the one that has developer fees. I'm sorry, not the previous one. So that's why you see the decrease in this one is related to that decrease in developers' fees. Miscellaneous, the one spike there was related to some insurance proceeds related to the police building. I believe there was a sewage issue over there in 2013. Investment income, we have been getting basically nothing, less than $5,000. You know, as Mark said, interest rates go up, that's gonna cost us more to issue debt, but we're also gonna get more on our investments. So we're projecting that going forward. And what I kinda wanted to do was show some, some big picture revenue distributions. You know, I know a couple of meetings ago, we spoke about the percentage of property tax fairly in depth. What I presented at that point was based on the five-year forecast that was adopted by council during the last budget process, and I was projecting that at 64%. So with the action that you've taken, I, I, I believe because the property values are coming in higher than we anticipated originally, we're still at 64%. If, if that action had not been taken, it would be closer to 66%. So, so this kind of breaks down, you know, our major revenue sources. 64.52% is property tax. The one that you took action on, franchise fees are now the second-largest source of revenue for the town. Sales tax is increasing just about 9%. And then this graph is a year-by-year total of general fund revenue. You can see 2010, basically through 2013, explosive growth, very, very large revenue increases. Those kind of taper off, really beginning in 2014, and that there's just small increases going forward there. And this is basically the dollar amounts of that graph which was presented. You can see almost a million-dollar increases early, 2010, 11, 12, a million dollars, a million dollars. That kind of tapers off, kind of in the planning years. We're projecting much smaller growth as we'll be built out. So we'll only be getting property tax increases on the existing base. But we do project some, some fairly significant increases in sales tax and the franchise fees also. So that's what we're presenting for revenue.
Is any of this taken into account, PD 30 doing something?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So my general feeling is that this is very conservative. Because if you go back two years and you look at the book we had, and you look at planning for, say, franchise fees, you're 838,000, but then you look now and it's, it's a whole different, it's 100,000 more, you know. Same thing with sales tax, so.
Well, sales tax, we, we got a fairly large payment this year of back taxes, basically, almost 40,000. So almost $40,000 of our increase has come from basically one payment. You know, we had a really huge month, I, I think, I don't remember exactly what month that was.
It's December, I think.
So a really huge month, but 40,000 of that was from previous periods, not, not this fiscal year, so. So that kind of skews that, and you'll get those, but.
Well, you know, just like gas and, and trash, you know, those are, are, we were real conservative. You know, if you look back, we, we thought gas would be $50,000, and you've got 100,000, you know, the estimate, or the proposed for FY '16.
Right. Well, I think we, but, I thought we budgeted 65 last year.
Well, this is two years ago. That's what I'm saying, so.
Why didn't do that budget?
Yeah, I kinda get the, I kinda get the feeling that we, we really are conservative when we look at.
We are. You, you know, some of these play into weather, electric, gas, those all, those all play heavily into the weather and, you know, we, we can't project the weather. You know, I've, you know, I've worked at a lot of full-service cities. This is the only one that I have not worked at. It's been a full-service city, so, you know. Projecting that water revenue, you know, which is a much bigger, a much bigger, you know, source of revenue than, than, than these smaller ones, you know, you really take that potential weather into account for those. So we, we kind of do that here also. But, you know, it, it's, it's hard to project, you know, if it's gonna be a really cold winter.
No, I do too. I'm just saying, it, it, it's, these numbers seem conservative.
We always try to err on the conservative side, number one. Number two, you know, and, and several years ago, you still didn't know what the developer's schedule was gonna be, were they, how many homes were gonna come online, were they gonna hold? I mean, what they're doing now is holding lots because of the demand. But because the, the landscape of our community has really come much clearer into picture, we, we can get a little bit better at forecasting. And so we, we have a little bit better idea because we know exactly what's on the ground. It's not open space, so to speak. And so we can fine-tune these a little bit, but we're always gonna try to be a little more conservative because we would rather tell you, you have more money than you're like, "Oh, man, we're short." You know, that's, that's not the way I like to do things.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll always have some, some one-off revenue that we get that we don't, we don't budget for. We don't expect some miscellaneous-type revenue where developer fee comes in, and, and those are, those are unbudgeted. This year, we had, you know, we budgeted $8,000 for a PIT administrative fee. And me and April Lizell had worked on that before I had left in, in September. And this year, we had not been billing, you know, we had not been billing the PIT. And this year, we had not been billing, you know, we had not been billing the PIT or, you know, the PIT administrator for that. So we collected forty-eight thousand for that, for, you know, services rendered in previous years. So, you know, we'll get things like that that are going to pop up there and not be budgeted, but...
Things like trash stand out to me, you know, you go from eighty-two to one forty-two, but when you look back, you actually had that decreasing, you know, in planning from...
Right.
So...
And there's a reason that it's decreasing, and that reason is because, you know, we're not going to have as much development. So we're not going to have those big roll-offs.
Okay, so you get rid of the big roll-offs.
We're going to get rid of those roll-off dumpsters, so I show those going away.
So after FY sixteen, that one forty-two drops significantly, or...
Not that significantly. I mean, it does over time. It's really, basically, I take what we're projecting for new home builds, and I add that to the residential part, and then I basically subtract that from what we're going to get on the industrial side.
Okay. So does that, in the future, hurt our, when you say percentage of revenue, is that going to potentially hurt that?
Not overall, because overall, franchise fees are going to increase, and so, no.
Okay.
I guess the quick answer is no, not substantially.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll find a, you know, an equilibrium, and, you know, we'll see that increase probably more. And, you know, I can't project what cable costs are going to do. They seem like they go up like crazy, so, you know, and, you know, you pay that franchise fee on that, too, so...
Okay. Any other questions? So Stephen, I have one question for you. Do you have money in your local administrative budget that you oversee to be able to handle the reprinting of your business cards and your name tag, your name plate on your desk?
Yes, I do.
Why would you need it?
Why would I need that?
Yeah.
To reprint my...
Business cards and the name plate on your desk, come on.
New address.
Because I just passed the CPA exam.
Oh, my goodness, you got CPA after your name. You thought I had a serious question.
Thanks for leading me into that.
You thought I had a serious question.
Yes, I did.
Boy, the wheels were...
She takes, so that's why I looked at her.
They were turning.
But, you know, the best title is the ATM, so you want the money, you go to him.
Right, right.
Well, I was willing to give up some council expense if he needed it at this point, I guess he's got the money, so it is.
Can we charge it off the hotel tax? My favorite topic.
Whoa.
For those out there, it's an inside joke.
And Stephen, stay there, because you've introduced Amber as a new controller, and I told her to be ready because I was going to have a question for her.
Okay.
So this is the introduction of her to council.
So what does control mean to council?
What does a control... No, that's Stephen's question to define what she's supposed to do. But how many years have you been working in finance in the public sector? That's your question.
So I started in accounting sixteen years ago. I've been doing accounting all this time. I've been here seven days, so I'm an old timer here. But I'm excited to come on board and learn everything that Stephen has to be trained in, being a resident.
So sixteen years ago, you started when you were eight?
Greg, that's not going to get you anything from her. You cannot ask her directly for any information. Just stop it. Stephen, thank you very much, and congratulations on passing the exam.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Mayor, something I mentioned to the council earlier today, I'd like to have the opportunity, rather than at the next meeting, do the expenditures, I'd like to push that to the July fourteenth meeting. I just feel a lot more comfortable with that.
You don't want to do it remotely via...
I don't. I'm going to say that I don't have good connection issues.
Yeah.
And I'm an hour ahead.
A portion of the beach that you're on can't get that. All right, thank you very much. Item number seven, consider to take appropriate action to appoint the mayor and two council members to serve as the Town Council Appointment Committee for Boards, Commissions, and Corporations, including discussion of the application and interview process. I would entertain a motion to do that if somebody wants to do so, or you can nominate.
I would like to make a motion to nominate, well, of course, it's the mayor, and Tim Kurtz and Rylan Rowe.
Second.
I'll second that if...
We got a second.
We have one.
No, we're just leaving him hanging.
... moves, Shoffner seconds, naming Tim Kurtz, Rylan Rowe, and the mayor to the appointments committee. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah, we'll start getting applications tomorrow, we've already got four in, the reappointments.
I know I applied.
All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous, it passes. Receive the mayor's state-of-the-town address. I have twenty-two pages, no, you're not.
So can we be like the Republicans, Democrats at the city?
Just sit there, yeah.
I have prepared a rebuttal to this, so...
He's going to take a sip of his water in the middle of it, too.
Since taking office in May just over a year ago, the council and staff have been very busy trying to accomplish a number of significant objectives. With four of our members having served, having never served in the public office, and two council members having limited public experience service, we strive to work together towards common goals. I believe we've accomplished significant goals and continue to work on our plans. Much of the time has been spent on the goal to move forward on construction of a new town hall and police facility. With the negotiations already underway with the country club when we took office, we waited for the club to sign a contract. As the time passed and members of council became concerned with the proposed location and traffic issues related to that location, we agreed to continue to explore other options for land. The two logical options were to locate the facility on PD thirty, Beck Land, or on land owned by the First United Methodist Church across from PD thirty. Both of these options were fairly close to the existing municipal facilities and allowed our planning to utilize the existing annex building, which existed on mud property. The debt on the construction of the annex building still had about ten years left, so this seemed to make sense. The attractive part of locating our buildings on PD thirty was the idea that we might be able to get Mr. Beck to remove or substantially reduce the number of apartments allowed in his approved zoning. It was the unanimous agreement of council that the citizens of Trophy Club did not want apartments in PD thirty. The town was willing to purchase over two acres of land to place the joint facility of town hall and police in the center of what was being called Town Center by the Beck's, and use hotel occupancy tax to construct a civic slash conference center adjacent to the town hall and a planned hotel site. The agreed-upon price for the land at that time was fifteen dollars a square foot. Mr. Beck did, in fact, submit plans to P and Z for his new design, and at the last minute pulled his request for the modification to PD thirty, telling the council that he could not get the project financed. During this time, we had begun conversations with the leadership of the Methodist Church, and had our architect draw general plans that would have allowed the shared parking to provide a hundred spaces to the church in times when the town would not be using the parking. The land was surveyed, and we received an appraisal, and this information was shared with the church. Ultimately, the church decided to not sell the land to the town. These plans included utilizing the annex building as part of our, for part of our staff. During this process, the council and staff worked on reducing the needed space requirements from what was proposed in early two thousand fourteen, a forty-three-thousand-square-foot joint building, to somewhere between fifteen to twenty-three-thousand square feet, depending on how much of the annex building would be utilized. After the church decided to not sell their land, we did have a brief conversation with Mr. Beck, trying to just buy land which would have placed our facilities along Trophy Club Drive. The council did not think Mr. Beck would move forward with his plans, and he kept trying to tie our construction with his construction plans. The council explored several other options for land, which included trying to utilize some parkland that could be repurposed, and it was not feasible. Today, we own over five acres of land on Trophy Wood Drive across from the Hampton Inn, excuse me, and just northwest of the Holiday Inn being constructed. Tonight, we were able to see some of the plans for that site, which included slightly over twenty-three-thousand square feet of a consolidated police and town hall. The purchase of the land was accomplished by using one point three-five million of the two-and-a-half-million certificate of obligation that the previous council had approved and borrowed, anticipating the purchase of the country club land. The balance of this CO, one point one-five million, will be used towards the construction of the future town hall and police facility. The current plans include repurposing the annex building into some other public use, which could include an activity and our senior center. These plans are not finalized at this time. The town still does not own the land where the annex building is located, and the talks with the mud about purchasing the land have been put on hold until the mud completes its water study, to make sure none of this land would be needed for future parking or for the ground storage tank that they are considering. The council plans at this time to call a bond election for November two thousand fifteen, asking the citizens to approve the construction of a joint facility at the new location. Today, we do not know the estimated cost, but over the next few weeks or months, we will finalize our plans and have a better idea of the cost. The decision to have the bond election will have to be made by council in mid-August. Having said all of this, the town is in very good financial condition, maintaining our double-A-plus bond rating, and having a general fund balance at fiscal year-end September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, of slightly over three million dollars, which was thirty-nine and a half percent of the general fund expenditures for two thousand fourteen. Our projected general fund balance for fiscal year-end two thousand fifteen is about two point nine million, or thirty-four point seven percent of expenditures. Our fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget included two point eight-seven million of capital improvements, which have been funded with reserve, balance from several notes, and utilizing a tax note to balance and maintain our interest in sinking tax rate. Not only is our financial future bright, but we still have two hundred and seventy total residential lots remaining in town, with a hundred and nine of those from the PIT, twenty-two from a development called Water's Edge, twenty-seven from Villas of Hogan's Glen, eighty-eight in Canterbury Hills, and fourteen in the Isle of Turnberry. We've issued a hundred and eight building permits year-to-date, with forty-eight residential building permits and plan review. The process of building new homes in Trophy Club started when I was mayor over eight years ago. The council approved the first residential PIT in Texas. This allowed us to prosper while other cities struggled to provide for new home development. We were booming. I'm very proud of our seventy-two full-time employees who are dedicated to our citizens. This is evidenced by their extra effort they put forth in winter icy months and in extreme weather conditions. We have just finished the wettest five months in many years, and I'm grateful that the major drainage improvements projects accomplished in the last year have worked and protected our citizens who have found themselves in the past with groundwater issues. I'm also very grateful to our public safety staff, both fire and police, for the excellent work they perform in difficult situations, specifically in critical life circumstances. I am proud that I received comments from grateful citizens who are alive today because of the professional efforts of these people. Because I frequently get asked the question of how many employees are in various departments, here are the numbers: twenty-one police, fifteen fire EMS, fifteen in parks and wrecks, eight in community development, and eleven in IT, and the largest department, two in IT. No, I was just kidding. This year, our town has turned thirty years old and has a population of almost thirteen thousand citizens, and should end up with slightly over fourteen thousand at build-out. Economic development in town is on the horizon of new and exciting things. Early in two thousand sixteen, both the full-service Holiday Inn and the Homewood Suites that are under construction should be open. And with four hotels in town, we should be able to utilize our hotel occupancy tax to provide for services for our citizens without any tax effect on them. In addition, you should be watching the websites and papers from some exciting announcements about new restaurants that have said they're coming to town. Look forward to experiencing some excellent cuisine. Trophy Club continues to receive recognition for the quality of life we enjoy. Here are some of the recent awards. Our EDC four B received an Economic Excellence Award in two thousand fourteen. Trophy Club, the Highlands of Trophy Club, received the Community of the Year Award in two thousand fourteen from the Dallas Business Association, which goes back to the council having the foresight to approve the PIT. U.S. Census shows our town as the third fastest-growth city in DFW from two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen, and the Dallas Business Journal listed us as the seventh fastest-growing zip code in DFW with a four percent-plus growth rate. We were ranked third most healthy neighborhood in Dallas Morning News in May of two thousand fourteen, and based on air quality, places to work, access to healthful food, and available trails and sidewalks. In May of two thousand fourteen, D Magazine ranked us seventh-best suburb, and in May two thousand fifteen, we were ranked fifth-best neighborhood overall by Dallas Morning News. Your town council is pleased and excited with the new leadership in our town, with Town Secretary and Records Manager Holly Fernbrus, Police Chief Patrick Arata, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director Stephen Glickman, and to have Town Manager Stephen Seidel as the leadership of this new team of qualified staff. And I would be amiss if I didn't mention our Town Secretary Patricia Adams, who provides needed advice and counsel no matter the day of the week or the time of the day. And Adam Adams for leading the most visual department that makes me smile as I see the quality of our facilities and the medians. I won't take time to mention everyone on staff, but on behalf of council, we say thanks to each of you who do your job day in, day out, making the town a great place to live. I would mention those people who deal with the public more than we do, of Ed Helton, who has had street and drainage projects, and knows many of our citizens' first name and their phone numbers, and Pat Cook and his staff, who continue to deal with difficult issues that our citizens face. Thank you on behalf of council. With this leadership team and staff, we will strive to achieve the following in the years to come: new and improved transparency with the implementation of a new records management system and the codification of our ordinances; maintaining our current tax rate, or slightly lowering, as Mr. Lamont would like to see us do, and continue implementing capital improvement projects while our growth rate provides increases in tax revenue. We will continue and pledge ourselves to listen to citizens and hold the lines of communication open at all times. And we'll utilize the wonderful financial condition of our town and the benefits of a low cost of borrowing, prior to hearing what it did tonight, to save our citizens' interest and PIT residents' money on their assessments through refunding of debt. Our mission: to maintain Trophy Club's standing as a premier residential community and a great place to call home by protecting and promoting the interests of its residents, businesses, and property owners. I am honored to work with this council. Mayor Pro Tem Greg Lamont for his passion for keeping spending under control and striving to lower the tax rate. Philip Shoffner for his research in keeping the entire council informed... Philip Schaffner for his research and keeping the entire council informed and on our toes, so to speak. Garrett Reed for his knowledgeable leadership as we've worked through development and land acquisition issues. Roland Rowe for his analytical skills and forward thinking. Jim Perrow for his attention to detail and striving to keep our planning for the future building efficient while maintaining the utilization of our current facilities and working with the Methodist Church during those negotiations. And to Tim Kurtz, our newest member, for his business knowledge and approach to decisions while adding to our forward thinking as we plan for a new su- new facility. We are, in fact, a great place to call home, and this year, on the Fourth of July, we will once again place over thirty thousand small flags along our streets. The goal for Stars and Stripes is forty thousand flags along our streets. We show our American pride, and I am proud to say that I call Trophy Club my home. Thank you, council, for your support and your leadership this past year. What'd you say? I think you're out of order, Kurtz. Have you been cau- called out of order yet? All right, so it does say, "Receive Mayor's State-of-the-Town Address and Discussion of Same." So does anybody want to discuss what I just read? Mayor Pro Tem Lamont.
One minor correction, I believe you referred to our town attorney as our town secretary.
I did?
Yes. Just a little.
You caught it? You were paying attention?
No, actually, I was reading it off your shoulder.
Patricia, I'm most sorry if I did that.
I thought I had a promotion.
Well, apparently, I can't read what I wrote, that or what I wrote, in what I said, you know, didn't mean, intend to, but I apologize for that.
That's no problem. I knew what you meant.
I did say your name.
I knew, I knew who you're talking about.
So I can call you on Saturday at ten PM and all those kind of things? Anyone else? All right, number nine, "Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution of the town council nominating one person to serve as a member of the Dinco 911 District Board of Managers and providing an effective date." Council, I believe you have information in your packet and potentially have received a request from a person who currently serves on the board to be nominated. Do you wish to make a nomination? I think there's a resolution, is that right, 2015-10 in your packet that you could move? That names, um...
Well, I like to nominate, I'm going to mispronounce this so badly, Sue Tarmile? Not even close, huh?
Close enough.
Anybody know the name? The pronunciation?
Tamele. She doesn't say the J. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Greg Lamont, a second by Tim Kurtz approving Resolution 2015-10. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. And Holly, I think you have to get that to them tomorrow, or something like that, right? Okay. So please follow up and make sure they do receive it. We had a problem last time. All right, item number ten, Town Manager Seidel's update, Seidel, Seidel, that's the wrong, sorry, update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding saying Trophy Club Park and mosquito update.
Well, you actually pronounced it the correct German way of Seidel. I had a grandmother somewhere down the line that didn't like it, so she changed it to Seidel, so. You're actually correct, Mayor.
Germans should sit together. Seidel Schaffner.
Kurtz.
Kurtz. Kurtz, it's Kurtz probably that way, for sure.
So, Trophy Club Park, as you know, it's still underwater, and I haven't looked in the last few days, but it was still up about, Lake Grapevine was still up about a little over twenty-six feet, which is the highest lake in the region, and so most of the park is still underwater. The park is closed to vehicular traffic, but there are still parts of the park that you can walk and do those types of things, so it's, it's closed for a lot of activities, but if there are still folks who like to trail, do trail runs and walk their dog, and they can still, they can still do that. We have contacted FEMA regarding, regarding disaster assistance, and right now, the state does not, has not met the threshold for, for that disaster declaration, but claims are continuing to come in and processed. FEMA encouraged us to keep track and turn in our loss of revenue numbers as well as damage to the county, because that's where that is all being funneled to, is through Denton County. One of our issues is that, while it may be easy to track the loss of revenue to some extent, what we can't track right now because of the lake level is the amount of damage that may have occurred. We really won't know that. It may be some time because of, it depends on what the course plan is regarding water releases, it depends on how hot it gets with evaporation, all those types of things, but that's something that we're on top of, it's something that we're going to keep monitoring, and it's something that we'll stay in touch with state and federal authorities about what we can do to mitigate our losses. Mosquitoes, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we did have a positive test at the south end of Harmony Parks trap that we have there. We did do some immediate larva sighting there, and then we did two nights of successive adulta sighting through the loop in town, and we, we did not have a positive test this past week, but we continue to look at that, we continue to monitor it, again, as we'll work with April and Pat and his team, along with Patrick Prather, who was our, our consultant, so to speak, regarding mosquitoes. He's been assisting us, and I think it was really good work on Pat's part to be proactive, as well as the councils to approve that contract, because we'd be, I think, scrambling right now had that not been the case. So appreciate Pat and his folks and April getting the word out, as well as the council. On two different notes, as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to be on vacation starting tomorrow. Stephen Glickman will be here, he'll be, if you've got questions or any, any issues, he's the guy to call, and also, we'll be adding a person to the Seidel clan in a few months, we're going to add a daughter, so we're pretty excited about that.
Congratulations.
Thanks. And that's it.
Thank you, Stephen. Mayor Pro Tem Lamont, you have a question?
On behalf of the 30th Anniversary Committee, is there any kind of historical model as far as water receding back and that, with the, the fall festival could be in jeopardy? I know September would be a long way away.
I don't know, that's a really good question. We could maybe ask Tom and TNP, you know, one of the things that we're doing right now, we, we weren't able to do it on Saturday, did it fly today? Okay, it's because of cloud cover this time of year, we weren't able to fly the aerial photos, but we did fly today, and so that's something that is really important to me, not only because we can capture where the lake is today, but we're capturing the whole town, because it's something for historical purposes, that's, I wish that we would have done this ten and twenty and thirty years ago, we would have flown every couple of years to see the change in the town, because you can't go back. And so one day, twenty, thirty years from now, they'll have some photographs of what the time, town looked like. I think we can try to look, but we, we can follow up with Tom Rutledge and see if there are some type of maps, you know?
Probably, probably between historical data on Lake Grapevine from 2007, which was a month later in the year when it all, rain hit, but it was still the same level, you could put that with a topo map and come with some, come up with some decent idea.
You've got to remember, this year was worse. I mean, this was like the twelfth-highest.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question. I had a citizen ask me, in the gas wells, they've moved rock, and there's, there's like a lake in there, and they're wondering if those are being treated for mosquitoes.
We have to, yes, he will treat those for, the, the contract is only for the public areas, and that's actually private land, but if we go with him, he'll treat those, and we've asked him to do that. It's actually kind of dried up this week, but...
And, and some of the reasons why that gravel is there is to spread out, but it's been so wet, they can't get the machinery there because they may sink.
So in reference for mosquito spraying, Stephen, to let you know, the Hogan's Glen Homesteaders Association has authorized four weeks of weekly spraying within all the streets of Hogan's Glen to continue to help control adult mosquito population. I think it's going to start next Wednesday, but I asked Malcolm to make sure that the town knows about it, so you can get it out for communication purposes, so that neighboring areas will find out about it, all the citizens that live in Hogan's Glen are going to get a letter about it.
We'll do what we can. We have reached out to the country club a few times regarding participating, and they're content doing their management philosophy regarding mosquitoes.
All right. Any other questions of Stephen? All right. Item number eleven, "Items for Future Agendas to Include Discussion of Agenda Items for Consideration on the Upcoming Regular Session Council Agenda for June 23rd, 2015 Meeting and Discussion of Future Agenda Items to Include Discussion of the Below Items from the Future Agenda List. A) Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Policy on Equipment Schedule for Replacement Program." Schaffner had requested that. And B) Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Reviewal Sched- Reviewing Schedules for Fees for Outside Baseball Tournaments and Capacity. We also have on page eighty of your packet, the June 23rd Proposed Agenda, and I had one question related to it, don't know that you would put it there, but I have heard that the Fire EMS Committee was going to make a report to the MUD later this month, and I wonder if we had a date from our group that they were going to, wanted to present their findings to council?
I think that it's going to be the next meeting, because one of the, one of the people that are going to present is not going to be at the 23rd meeting, so it will probably be the following.
Okay. So the first meeting in July is what we would plan for?
Correct.
So...
I don't think that they're presenting to the MUD, I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
So...
I thought I saw it in an email.
Maybe an up, I, I saw the same thing, but maybe...
Maybe it's an update.
Just the town, right? Just the council?
No, we, I mean, we haven't, we haven't directed anybody to, to update the MUD, so I don't know where that's coming from.
Okay, all right. So I guess Stephen tentatively planned for the first meeting in July that we would have a target date for trying to get a report from the committee if they're going to do so. Anybody else have something in reference to the 23rd, June 23rd meeting? Now, Stephen, are you back for that one, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right, then call your attention to page eighty-one, eighty-two. Yes?
Did we put a time on the, I hate to bring it up again, but the community garden, like do we have some sort of timeframe you're going to come back with us?
Yeah.
On that we can get out to?
So my goal is July 14th.
Okay.
So...
So we're going to get that on the, on the agenda?
Yeah, that's, that's, it, I, I want to try to pull all this together, and let's move on down the road. We'll see if we can pull, I mean, some of that's going to be contingent on trying to get the people around the table and coming up, you know, how quickly can we get a, an agreement in place with a particular group and bring it back to council, but, you know, I'd like, I'd like to say July 14th, but don't hold me to that just yet until we kind of get our arms around it.
Now, how long do you think it takes to incorporate a 501(c) or whatever they're going to, how they're going to incorporate? I think we need to have that placed before you start meeting with them.
Well, I, I think having a meeting with those individuals about if it's, keep Trophy Club wild, they are a 501(c)(3) already. If it's another group, then you're, you're correct, it may take an additional ti- I, I think that's still to be determined.
Did we, did we pretty much finalize the equipment replacement? What, what did we want to bring that back for?
Yeah.
Or do we want to bring that back? Yeah, I saw that, I can't remember.
We got, we approved it last...
That's item three on your future agenda list.
I know, and why did we leave it, we left it on for some reason, but I don't know exactly why we left it on.
I thought that, my memory was, that was a future report that was going to come back to us as they looked at the future year bud- next year's budget, but I may be wrong.
Well, I, I thought the, like, you wanted different numbers on there, too, I mean, they're conserv- they were so conservative or so overblown.
Yeah, but I, if, if that's the case, then I think we should probably just put it on the next meeting and be done with it, you know? If, if we're, if we want to just talk about it, or look at numbers, or discuss that, or maybe have somebody present why those numbers are the way they are, that, you know, from staff.
All right, so suggestion is put it on next meeting, item number three from the future agenda list?
Yeah, because I think that we can just, you know, deal with it, that meeting and be done, and take it off.
So the other item that's listed there is related to item number five on the future agenda list, "Consider and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Following Schedules of Fees for Outside Baseball Tournaments."
And I think that our subcommittee will be dealing with some of that.
All right, so we'll just leave it there?
Leave it there, and then when we bring it back, we'll, you know, take care of all that as well.
Okay. So an item that was added and mentioned again was item six, Discussion of Possible Charter Amendments. I don't know, has anybody submitted any ideas to Patricia?
I did.
All right. So I guess, do we want to try to have some discussion about those items at the next meeting, to say either move forward or don't move forward? That would be the intent, is bring the item forward and see if there's a consensus on the part of council to even do anything with it, and if there's not, why should Patricia spend any more time on it? If there is, then she needs to look at it. So can we put that on next agenda for right now? And Patricia, would you get out to council?
Yes.
What all the suggestions were, please? And item number seven, Discussion of Possible Uses of Hotel Occupancy Tax, including the ability to use the funds for Trophy Club Park, a favorite subject for Mayor Pro Tem Lamont. And I, I talked to the city manager, Bruno Rumblo of Grapevine, told Stephen about it. If there's anybody that knows how to use hotel occupancy tax, Grapevine does, and he offered that he would have his finance director come out and talk to us if we wanted that, and so Stephen, I guess what I would say is, would you try to see if you can't schedule something to...
We're already in that process.
Okay. All right. So we'll just leave that one. Anything, I had two items that I was reminded of last week by the Roanoke Mayor, and had a brief discussion with some people about that. I think most of you are aware that Roanoke had plans, maybe two years ago, to construct a wall along Bobcat Boulevard next to the old Marshall Creek town, and that they planned on trying to put that road, I mean, that wall, on town property. Well, I think actually some of that property may very well be high school property.
They approved it, I think.
The school district did?
I know it was on their agenda.
Was it?
Last month.
So one of the questions Stephen had was, well, why don't they put the wall on the property of the residents that sit there? But if it's put on inside our city limits and it's school district property, then who's going to maintain it in ten years when it tilts or falls?
Well, and it's, it's like two foot from the existing wall, is what, how the agenda item read.
Yeah. Without getting into a discussion, I know the intent is to try to save a row of hack berries and...
A weed.
And I think...
A weed tree.
I, I would think that, you know, our approach may be to say, it's a lot easier on everybody, mainly us, to say, put it on the property line, and then maybe we can talk about doing some vegetation there to replant trees that are actually hardy, or, you know, a hardwood-type tree, oak trees or something, and, and line the wall that way. I would probably be more in favor of that.
I see that probably more as a staff issue to deal with than council action, but I just made a note of it, so it didn't disappear and council was aware of it. And then there's also an item going on in Roanoke where they are providing funds to assist residents who have old dilapidated fences that... assist residents who have old dilapidated fences that border the town or go along areas that are popular driving routes to replace those, and there's an area that is actually in Trophy Club on the far west part of town, very close to the new storage facility.
I know exactly which one.
And, and if you go over there, you can kind of see that dilapidated area. I don't know if it's something we need to deal with from a code enforcement aspect to get things happening or not, but they keep bringing it up to me, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
That's interesting, because we brought that up.
Oh.
A while ago, and we asked to partner with them on that, and it wasn't at that time. One of the challenges with that is that some of those fences have rock piers, and those can be very costly to replace, and so, you know, one thought that we even, that we had internally with staff a year or so ago was, if the town would pay for those to be replaced, and then if we paid for the fence or split the cost with the fence, then we could bill the homeowner some type of amount, and they could pay us back or something. I, I don't know how that would work, but it's something that we would probably need direction from the council about how you would like to explore that.
Again, I think that's a staff issue to kind of come up with some proposal for us, but I just didn't want to let it drop. Anybody else have a future agenda item? All right. Counsel, we do have executive session in our agenda. Before I read it and we head that direction, there is some advice that is maybe needed for the Building Standards Commission, that, are you prepared to talk about that, Stephen and Patricia? All right, and so we'll, I'll read this and we'll go into executive session. Item number 12, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551-072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third party, potential purchase of property. Item B, Section 551, Point 0712, consultation with attorney to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body, under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act, legal advice related to appointing a Building Standards Commission. It is 10:44, and we are in closed session. It is 11:12 PM, we have returned from executive session and will reconvene into our regular session. Counsel, do you have any action to take? Hearing none, we'll move on. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, make a motion to adjourn, I was reading myself.
Right and row move, Greg Lamont second, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Jim Perrow and Garrett Reed opposed, everybody else for, everybody voted for it.